I'd like to call this June 5th meeting of the Hampton City School Board to order. Ms. Bowers, would you call the roll?
Mr. Harper.
Here.
Ms. Henry.
Here.
Mr. Kilgore.
Here.
Mr. Pearson.
Here.
Ms. Phillips.
Here.
Ms. Smith.
Here.
Ms. Mugler. Here. Let the record show that all the board members are present and along with our Division Superintendent, Dr. Linda Shiflett, our School Board Attorney, Ms. Nancy Reeves, and our School Board Clerk, Ms. Carolyn Bowers. We arrive now at the time of our meeting where we have our invocation. I'll turn things over to our student liaison, Mr. Alan Booth.
Thank you Chairman Mugler. Chairman Mugler, Dr. Shiflett, Mr. Kilgore, members of the board, and the community at large. Tonight, I have a great honor of introducing you to students Cody Raby and Bilal Boumadi. They will be leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance. All rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. Bilal, could you come back up to the microphone, please? Now, I had the privilege of speaking with these two young gentlemen before the meeting started, and I must say, they are fine representatives of their school. Now, boys, what are your favorite subjects? Cody, you can go first.
Math and science.
And Bilal?
Mine has to be math and soc-- I mean, science and social studies.
Definitely some good choices. I can see leaders in the scientific community and even maybe in our government one day, right there in these two young gentlemen. Boys, what do you like to do in your spare time? Do you play any sports? Have any hobbies?
I like to play soccer and I lo-- I love-- I have a hobby of all information of Dragon Ball Z.
I collect Star Wars Legos and I like to play soccer at school.
The two remind me of my own childhood. Scary. Anyways, I believe that you two are here tonight to share with us a poem. If your peers could come up with you. We have first grader Mia Shuri, third grader Cassidy Raby, kindergartner Giselle Banks, fourth grader Jayden Banks, and second grader Ayat Boumadi. When you two are ready, feel free.
Good evening, Dr. Shiflett, Mrs. Mugler, members of the school board, members of the division leadership team, and guests. My name is Cody Raby.
And my name is Bilal Boumadi.
We are students at Langley Elementary School, and we war with pride in our wonderful school. At Langley Elementary, we celebrate learning side by side with children from all over the world.
And while we celebrate our diversity, we appreciate our opportunity, the opportunity to go to the best school with the best staff anywhere. As we close this year, we would like to thank you, our Hampton leaders, our principal, Mrs. Herman, and the entire Langley staff for giving us the best elementary school foundation possible so we could be smart kids prepared for the final year of our elementary school career.
S is for self-disciplined. They taught us that by working hard and setting lofty goals, that if we follow the plan we make, we'll learn to use self-control.
M is for motivated. They taught us school won't always be too easy or too much fun, but if we set the goals that we achieve, we'll feel pride in what we have done.
A's for academically focused. They taught us that for future success, lifelong learning will be a must. First high schools and colleges in gaining for employment. Teacher leaders you'll look up to and trust.
R is for responsible and respectful. They taught us to be responsible for all what we say and we do. They taught us to respect other people. Treat them how you want them to treat you.
T is for talented. They taught me to dream lofty dreams. I can be anything that I want to be. I have all the special talents and skills. I'm unique and I'm free to be me. We're smart kids from Samuel P. Langley. That legacy will set us apart. We thank you, our leaders, our principal, our teachers. We thank you from the bottom of our heart.
Fantastic job. Any parents, teachers, principals, or anyone else who knows any of these fine kids, please stand and be recognized. It's been an honor having the seven of you here with us tonight, and I wish you nothing but the best in your future.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you so much for joining us tonight, you smart children from Samuel P. Langley. Great to have you with us. Hampton City Schools has lost two its own in the last couple of weeks. Longtime football coach, Mr. Dan Thompson, passed away, and also Bethel High School student, Mr. Rafael Davis, lost his life a week ago. So if you all would, please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. We move on to the portion of our meeting where we, and all of you are probably all here for this very reason, we take up our recognition. So I call on now our Executive Director of Public Relations and Marketing, Ms. Anne Stevens Cherry, and she will be assisted this evening by Board Member, Ms. Phyllis Henry.
I want to give another special shout out to the students from Langley. They did a great job. I think it's just so fitting that we had the students here from Langley doing the invocation today because tonight, all of our recognitions are students, and it speaks to the quality of education that we have in the Hampton School Division. And because we have so many to recognize tonight, because this is the last formal televised school board meeting for the year, we've had many people who have had successes in many areas. So with that said, the way we're going to do recognitions tonight is to break it into two areas. We're going to have an on-the-field section and an in-the-classroom section. And at the end of each section, we will ask parents and those, like coaches and teachers, to stand and be recognized. But we would ask that everyone, once you're called onstage and go back to your seat, if you would remain seated until we have officially ended all the recognitions so that everybody can get the respect they need when they come onstage, okay? With that said, we're going to start with the Phoebus High School Girls Outdoor Track Team, Coach Vinita Brown. As they are approaching the stage, I'd like to say that when you talk about the Hampton School Division, you cannot use the word champions and not know that you're talking about what's going on in HCS. And we asked these people to be here with us today because we wanted to introduce to you the Phoebus High School Girls Outdoor Track Team and their coach as they are. Please give him a round of applause. Peninsula District Champions.
It's a lot of practice to get this done, isn't it, ladies? And a lot of events and a lot of diverse talent. So congratulations to all of you for the part that you played in winning the Peninsula District. The Hampton City School Board congratulates the Phoebus High School Girls Outdoor Track Team Peninsula District Champions for 2013. Thank you so much.
Is Carolyn Brown here being represented? Would you please step forward? We have a special award for her. Carolyn Brown, a member of the Phoebus High School Girls Outdoor Track Team, was the Peninsula District Champion in the 100-meter sprint and the Eastern Region Champion in the 100-meter sprint and high jump. Let's hear it for Carolyn. And also on this famous team is Kennedy King here? Oh, no. Well, we will. We will catch up with her, and our prayers are with it. Thank you so much, and let's have a round of applause for this wonderful Phoebus High School Girls Outdoor Track Team.
You have to really love it to get out and run in the heat and even cold this year, all that stuff, ladies. It was a good job all around. Ready, Ms. Stevens, for the next one?
Yes. We'd like to call on again from Phoebus High School, but this time with the Boys Outdoor Track Team, Charles Graham. Charles, who is coached by Brian Roundtree, is another Peninsula District Champion. He is the Peninsula District Champion in the 110-meter hurdles and Peninsula District Champion in the 300-meter hurdles. Let's have a round of applause for Charles.
I didn't read his certificate, but it said, "The school board congratulates you, darling. We're very proud of you." I'm sorry. I got so carried away with the winning smile, I didn't do my job.
There's a winning smile. Now, we move on to the Phoebus High School Spring Sportmanship Awards. I would like to call on, is Mr. Beverly here? Would you please come up onstage because I'm going to tell you how we're going to do this. This past year, we put a special emphasis on good sportsmanship among our athletes, and each school was to, each season, name and select those players on various teams who throughout the season had displayed expert sportsmanship, who raised the bar, so to speak, when it came to sportsmanship. And I can tell you, Phoebus has gone out of its way to make sure that that happens. So I'm going to call on the names of the students, and Mr. Beverly, you're going to get all the certificates so that you can know who the students are, okay? Now, coming up onstage, our top sportsman in Phoebus High School, Matthew Curtis, varsity baseball. Kristen Hurst, JV baseball. Amber Land, varsity softball. Jordan Wheatley, JV softball. Dominique Rebus, boys outdoor track. Chelsea Duncan, girls outdoor track. Anthony Musa, varsity boys soccer. Hunter Lawrence, JV boys soccer. Samantha Ziamba, varsity girls soccer. Justina Coles, JV girls soccer. Khalil Harris, boys tennis. And Anna Elizabeth Allen, girls tennis. Let's have a big round of applause for our people who have displayed exceptional sportsmanship, and Ms. Kilgore agreed to honor this particular candidate.
I didn't read Charles' certificate. Sportsmanship Award, Hampton City Schools congratulates, Hampton City School Board congratulates all the following for demonstrating integrity, respect, and exceptional sportsmanship. And the quote on this says, "Good sportsmanship is not a singular act, but a habit. You are what you do repeatedly." So we congratulate all these young people for habits of mind and behavior that have been exemplary. Thank you, Mr. Beverly.
And now, moving on to Hampton High School. We'd like to call on the Hampton High School Girls 4x100 relay team. Chantel Ray, Koi Banks, Tori Ray, and Samara Russell. They're here. Okay, they're not here. Okay, well, I'm going to tell you about them. They are the Virginia High School League State Champions. Let's have a round of applause for them. And one of these students on the team, Chantel Ray, is the Peninsula District Champion for the 100-meters hurdle, Eastern Region Champion for 100-meter hurdles, Peninsula District Champion for 300-meter hurdles, and you may have seen a picture in the paper a couple of days ago, state champion in the 100-meter hurdles. So let's hear it for Chantel again. Now, continue with Hampton High. Your boys relay team here? The boys 4x400 relay team? Okay, that consisted of Abdul Ellis, Zapala Barnes, Trey Preston, and Darius Green, and they are Peninsula District winners. So let's have a round of applause for them. Now, Bethel High School. I'd like to call on Michaela Stuttsman. Michaela is a member of the Bethel High School Outdoor Track Team. Her specialty, if you will, is the 1600-meter and the 3200-meter. What is so interesting is that she is the Peninsula District Champion in both. Let's have a round of applause for Michaela.
For those of you who are as old as me, that's a mile and two miles before everything was in meters. Congratulations. Hampton City School Board congratulates Michaela Stuttsman, Peninsula District Champion in those long-distance races. Congratulations.
Now, we'd like to call on Ashley Greenlee and Jane Thomas from Bethel High School. Now, which one is Ashley? Okay, tell you about Ashley. Ashley, a member of the Bethel High School Outdoor Track Team, is the Peninsula District Champion in the 800-meter. Let's have a round of applause for Ashley. And Jane, her partner, is Peninsula District Champion in the triple jump, Eastern Region Champion in the triple jump. Let's have a round of applause for Jane.
And Jamie is, we congratulate, along with Ashley. Hampton City School Board congratulates you for this longtime achievement here. It's a lot of work to do this stuff. People just have no idea. And if, when they win an athletic scholarship to college, which they're probably going to do, they'll be working their way through school. That's how it amounts to being an athlete. Congratulations, ladies. This is signed by our Chairman, Martha Mugler, and the superintendent.
And now, moving to Kickitane High School. Cassie Ardern and Chrystia Espili. These two young ladies are a team. They are a doubles team. They are the Peninsula District Doubles Tennis Champions, Cassie and Chrystia. Give them a round of applause. And they were so good, they qualified for regionals. So let's have another round of applause for them.
Great champions, Martina and Serena. They're also great doubles players, so keep up the good work.
Congratulations again. Now, we'd like Coach Danny Mitchell and his Hampton High School baseball team to come on the stage. And here come the coaches. If you can't read it, their shirts say, "The Best Kept Secret at Hampton High." And I guess that's true because you're looking at not only the Peninsula District co-champions for baseball, but they ended with a regular season of 15-3, and this is the second year in a row that Hampton High has been named co-champions. Let's have a big round of applause for the team and the coach.
I'm guessing you guys think it's a best-kept secret because there's some other sports that Hampton High is famous for, but now they're going to start being famous for you, right? Okay, Coach, you want to say a couple words? This says, "Congratulations, Hampton City School Board congratulates the Hampton High baseball team on back-to-back championships."
Thanks, Dr. Shiflett, School Board, for having us down here again. You know, I'd like to thank a few people, and mostly the parents. They get them to practice, they're late coming home for dinner, and you know, these kids really worked hard. Thing about baseball, it's not like basketball, it's football. The field's not ready when you get there. These kids take care of a beautiful field at Hampton High School, and they've done a heck of a job. We've never had a losing streak in two years. We've never lost more than one game in a row in the last two years. I think that's pretty good. And you know, I'd like to thank Karen Holly, and she stepped in for Phil Malelo, who did an excellent job at AD, and you know, the grandparents, and it's going to be tough losing. We're losing nine kids out of this group. Eight are going to college, and one's going into our military. So they did a heck of a job for us, and I'm proud of them, and I think everybody should be proud of them.
Congratulations, guys. Dr. Grove, Charmaine Grove, would you come up and accept this last sports award, please? You will notice on your agenda, we would be honoring Anthony Barber. He's not able to be here today, but we want to acknowledge what he's done to bring accolades not only to the school division but to the city of Hampton as well. Anthony was the Virginia High School Coaches Association's Player of the Year in 2012. We're talking about his sport of basketball. He was the Peninsula District Leading Score this year with 1,981 points. And more importantly, we were recognizing him because he was named and participated as a 2013 McDonald's All-American. Let's hear it for Anthony Barber.
There are an awful lot of parents who have helped make this possible, so would all the parents, coaches, principals of all these athletes we've recognized, please stand and be recognized and get a hand from the kids.
Thank you. Now, as our athletes remain seated so we can hear about what's going on in the classroom, I would like to call on next, this paper, so excited, we've got so many sharp people in the school division, Daniel Bidrum from Kickitane High School and teacher Isabel Allen. See the teacher? Is Daniel here? Last call, Daniel. Okay, we're going to tell you about Daniel. You want to talk about Daniel just for a second?
Daniel had been with me for three years, taking Spanish, and the Spanish National Estad is really challenging, and he did very well. The two first year, he did a bronze medal, and this year he won a gold medal. And he's the gold medal, he won this gold medal, and he's been the only gold medal in Hampton Roads for Spanish National Estad.
And now, we'd like to call on Jonah Blas, Asif Khan, and Lacey Rowe from Kickitane High School, along with the teacher, Dr. Lisa Andre. Dr. Grove, Charmaine Grove, would you come up and accept this last sports award, please? You will notice on your agenda, we would be honoring Anthony Barber. He's not able to be here today, but we want to acknowledge what he's done to bring accolades not only to the school division, but to the city of Hampton as well. Anthony was the Virginia High School Coaches Association's Player of the Year in 2012. We're talking about his sport of basketball. He was the Peninsula District leading scorer this year with 1,981 points. And more importantly, we were recognizing him because he was named and participated as a 2013 McDonald's All-American. Let's hear it for Anthony Barber.
There are an awful lot of parents who have helped make this possible, so would all the parents, coaches, principals of all these athletes we've recognized, please stand and be recognized and get a hand from the kids.
Thank you. Now as our athletes remain seated, so we can hear about what's going on in the classroom. I would like to call on next, this paper, so excited, we've got so many sharp people in the school division, Daniel Bidrum from Kickitane High School and teacher Isabel See the teachers? Is Daniel here? Last call, Daniel. Okay, we're going to tell you about Daniel. You want to talk about Daniel just for a second?
Daniel had been with me for three years, taking Spanish, and the Spanish National Estad is really challenging, and he did very well. The two first year, he did a bronze medal, and this year he won a gold medal. And he's the gold medal, he won this gold medal, and he's being the only gold medal in Hampton Roads for Spanish National Estad.
Thank you. And now we'd like to call on Jonah Blas, Asif Khan, and Lacey Rowe from Kickitane High School, along with the teacher, Dr. Lisa Andre.
We came with hardware. You want Dr. Lisa, you want to explain this?
Well, in March, students took the National Latin Exam, and this year we had three students earn gold medals on that, summa cum laude awards. Jonah is not able to be here this evening, he's at West Point, but I wanted to recognize him anyway. Our other two recipients are Lacey Rowe, who also, like Jonah, won an award in Latin I. Lacey has also distinguished herself in the Classical Association of Virginia Latin Essay Contest, Essay Contest, and the Virginia Junior Classical League Competition this year, and has done a marvelous job. Lacey? And our third winner this evening is Asif Khan. Asif is new to Kickitane this year, and he earned a medal in Latin III. This is Asif's third gold medal on the National Latin Exam, which is extraordinarily outstanding.
Well, this says Hampton School Board congratulates these fine winners, and I think we have to congratulate their teacher for her enthusiasm and her encouragement of her students. Thank you so much. My Latin teacher, I told you, used to give extra credit if you participated in the, and she would also let you be exempt from your exam if you did well on the Virginia Latin It's the only, I entered more contests, so I didn't have to write translations.
Pearls of wisdom. Okay, now, Jessie White, curriculum leader for CTE, who does just an outstanding job. Would you please come forward and tell us about this outstanding team at Phoebus High
Students in the Phoebus High School Robotics Team have had a banner year with support from their parents, the teachers, and the community at large. These students spent over 6,000 hours over a six-week design and build period last winter to get their robot, from conceptual phase two, ready for competition. Their parents pulled together, they made sure that they had a schedule, they had suppers every night, they had lunches on the weekends, and ran errands for them. Our community is very supportive in our industries with the shipyard, Prentice School, BAE, Spawar, ECPI, Lockheed Martin, and these are mentors who are working directly with the students. I just wanted to say it's an amazing thing to know these people, they're doing a great job, and this is Team 2028, First Robotics Team Company.
Come on, Mr. Williams, come on, team. You have to tell me, what did the robot have to be able to do? What did the robot have to be able to do?
Shoot through the seams and climb up here.
While protecting itself from other robots that were trying to do it in at the same time? Yeah. It's all-out war. They have a very complicated task the robot has to be able to do, and while it's doing it, other people's robots are trying to sabotage you, right? So it's not only engineering, it's tactics, and this is a great group. Thank you all so much. Hampton City School congratulates the Phoebus Phantom Mentalist Team 2028. Are we planning that far ahead? What are we going to do in 2028? Oh, that was just a team. I thought we had plans. You know, I was ready to meet you guys somewhere on the moon in 2028. Okay, congratulations for outstanding preparation and participation in the first robotics competition. That's not the first one, that's the name of the competition. Thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate it. And the outstanding teacher, Mr. Williams.
Congratulations again. I tell you, Hampton High, is Joshua Williams here? We weren't sh... There he is. Joshua, come up. Come up on stage. This young man has had more publicity these last few months. He is amazing, and we're recognizing him tonight because he won a national award. He won the Award of Merit for the Reflections from the National PTA. His theme was "The Magic of a Moment," and his artwork displayed how he feels when he listens to music. I looked at the artwork today, it is displayed proudly on the Hampton High School website. Let's hear it for this national reflection winner, Joshua.
Joshua was at an academic awards dinner the other day, and I thought, why does he look so familiar? And I thought, he's the artist, that's why he looks so familiar. Congratulations, Joshua, we're very proud of you.
And now I'd like to call on Penny Peterson, our Director of School Counseling, along with two students, Su Tran and Kimmy Leyeni from Hampton High School.
This looks good because it says, "We congratulate you" from the school board for winning some scholarships, but even better, there's something that goes with the congratulations. So you want to do the honors?
I would love to.
We're very proud of you guys. There you go.
Thank you. I want everyone to understand and realize, each year our students receive in excess of 20, 25,000, I'm sorry, million dollars in financial aid and in scholarships, and I just really want to acknowledge all the students and parents who do all that hard work. Two of our students tonight, we're recognizing because these are scholarships that we at the division manage. We, all, students from all four schools can apply for this, and then the applications come, and a division scholarship committee makes the final selection. The first one is the J.S. Darling Memorial Scholarship. And I know we've all heard of Darling Stadium, and I'm not from Hampton originally, so I wanted to do a little research, and I thought this was a very interesting quote, and I'm glad our athletes are still here. This was from some research I found. "Athletes who meet failure, failure at Darling Stadium might take comfort in this. The stadium's namesake suffered his share of defeats before he won out. He endured the destruction of his fish oil factory by a hurricane and went broke when his lumber mill was unsuccessful. But when he struck it big with oysters and founded the J.S. Darling and Sons Oyster Packers, he became one of the leaders of the seafood industry that restored the civil war ravaged Hampton." Thought that was interesting for our athlete. All these years later, his legacy continues as the foundation established in his memory rewards $1,000 scholarship to Su Tran. Next week, she will graduate from Hampton High School, and in the fall will join the Hokey Nation at Virginia Tech. Su and his family came to Hampton two years ago from Vietnam. I think Mr. Darling would personally understand the words Su's father, Su's father spoke to him the first day he went to school in the United States, and I quote, "Remember this, you. You are the strongest man I know. If anything ever breaks you down, you know what to do, just build yourself back up." We and Hampton City Schools are very proud of you. I know Mr. Darling would be very proud of you. The Henry J. Kelly and Fred Lutt Scholarship was established to honor gentlemen and their work in the field of engineering. Both men later became professors in the Department of Aerospace and Ocean Engineering at Virginia Tech. This year's $1,000 scholarship is awarded in their memory to Kimmy Leyeni. Kimmy also is a graduate from Hampton High School, and she will be going to the University of Virginia in the fall. The requirements for this scholarship states that the student must be an active member of the National Honor Society, must possess leadership qualities, and be involved in extracurricular and/or community activities. Why Kimmy easily met this criteria, it was her essay that really swayed the committee. I'd like to read a small quote from it. "When I grow up, I want to be a ballerina, a gymnast, Mia Hamm, and an astronaut. That was my slogan when I was seven. Eleven years later, I sing a different tune. When I grow up, I want to be a film director and create my own educational television programming. I am well aware that my career goes stick out like a sore thumb, but I know this is what I yearn to do. Being a Nigerian-American young woman, I want to portray Africans, our culture and our history in a positive way. Long ago, historians mistakenly thought African-Americans were people without history. I'm going to be the person who disproves that notion." After meeting Kimmy, I'm pretty sure she's going to do that, and we're going to be so proud when she's a renowned film director in Hampton City Schools, as in her bio.
Thank you, Penny. I think your committee did a real good job.
That was great. And you can leave that dress up here. Although I could probably just use it for a scarf, that's about it. Now we get a chance to meet our salutatorians and valedictorians for 2013, starting with Bethel High School's salutatorian, Erin Adler. Erin has a GPA of 4.22 and scored 1680 on her SAT and 27 on the ACT. She has not yet made her final college decision, but is leaning toward the University of Virginia. Now, the salutatorian for Hampton High School, Thomas Kleckner. Thomas isn't here, but Thomas has a GPA of 4.51, scored 2310 on his SAT, and will be majoring in engineering at Virginia Tech. Let's hear it for him. The salutatorian for the Kickitane class of 2013 is Allison Barnes. Allison, not here, with a cumulative GPA of 4.51, she will be graduating next weekend, and she scored 1880 on her SAT. In the fall, she will be planning to attend the University of Virginia. That's Allison. And Phoebus High School's salutatorian, Alanye Hawthorne. Elaine. Elaine is graduating with a GPA of 4.29 and scored 1720 on her SAT. When asked her college, she replied, "Definitely the University of Virginia." Let's have a round of applause for our salutatorians. And now, drum roll, the valedictorians for the 2013 class. For Bethel High School, Stephen Deschamps. Stephen's cumulative GPA is 4.27, and he scored 1840 on the SAT. He will be attending Virginia Tech. The valedictorian for Hampton High, Elizabeth Tow. Known as Libby, she has a GPA of 4.55 and scored 2290 on her SAT, which designates her as a national merit finalist. She is an IB World School Diploma student and will attend the College of William and Kickitane High School is proud to have co-valedictorians this year. First is Sarah Angel. Don't see Sarah, but she is graduating with a GPA of 4.57 and scored 1910 on her SAT. In the fall, she will be attending the University of Virginia. Sharing the co-valedictorian spot is Lauren Chambers. Is Lauren here?
Aunt. They're having senior night at Kickitane. They're having senior night at Kickitane tonight.
There's senior night at Kickitane, okay? So we know what seniors are. But Lauren Chambers has a 4.57 GPA. With an SAT score of 2280, she earned the title of National Merit Finalist and National Achievement Winner. In the fall, she will attend Yale University. And rounding out from Phoebus High School, the 2013 valedictorian, John Peters. John's cumulative GPA is 4.38, and he scored 1780 on the SAT. He will be attending in the fall, Virginia Tech. Let's have a round of applause for 2013 valedictorians.
I just have to say that we're so proud of everything you do, because the thing you notice about all the students that are salutatorians and valedictorians, that are called up here for academic awards, that isn't the only thing they do. They're in other teams, they participate in so many other activities, and they enrich the life of their school by being hard workers and role models and good friends to their fellow students. So we thank you for all that you do for Hampton City Schools. We're very, very proud of you, and the congratulations are not just from this school board, but from all of our community.
Okay, Ms. Mugler is coming up for the final recognition, but we did on the field, and now it's time to do in the classroom. We want all the parents of these outstanding scholar students to please stand and be recognized, along with the members and staff and supporters from our four high schools. Come on, give it up. These guys are one.
We want to thank the parents for sending us such great kids. Kennedy King, can you come on up here, honey? Kennedy King, Peninsula District Champion in the long jump, Eastern Regional Champion in the long jump, Virginia High School League State Champion in the long jump. We're very proud of you. That's a lot of, that's a lot of work, isn't it? What was your long jump? 19, 7 and 1/4. Wow, okay.
Congratulations again. And I can only guess you didn't jump in those shoes, right? Okay. Ms. Mugler is rounding out the recognition portion with two honors, so we ask that you just remain seated for this, and thank you for your attention.
Thank you, Mr. Stevens, Jerry. And those are some long legs, so we can see why you're so good at the long jump. Incredible. I'd like to have those legs.
I'd like to have those shoes.
Yeah, shoes, we're good too. It's, it's an honor and a privilege for me tonight to honor two gentlemen that have worked very closely with the school board this year. Back in 2008, the, the school board elected to appoint a student liaison to our school board, and it brings a fresh student perspective to some of the work that we do, and when we're looking at policies and some of the things that we are doing for the school division, it's great to have that young mind and opinion to, to springboard off of sometimes. So our first student liaison I'd like to recognize tonight is Mr. Givante Blunt. Mr. Blunt is an active student. He's a member of the German Club, and he's also a member of the Neighborhood Youth Advisory Club, and on a regular basis, he's expected to attend at least one of our meetings per month, and as you can see, our meetings can carry on for quite a while. And as you can see, our meetings can carry on for quite a while, so it's quite a commitment for these young people to make. But he's just been a delight to have with us, and we know we're going to see great things out of this young man. I have one more thing. Black in recognition of service as a student liaison for the Hampton City School Board, 2012-2013.
I had a great time working with the school board and Alan. They say great minds think alike, and Alan and I will always come up with things to present to the school board, and it was great. I'm going to go back to my seat before I drop this.
And I'm a lot shorter than he is. Our student liaison this year was Mr. Alan Booth. Would you come forward? Mr. Booth, as you all experienced tonight, is not a shy fellow. He is very well spoken and articulate, which is probably what was one of the things that attracted the school board to this young man, because he is not afraid to voice his opinion and tell us what he thinks, and he is very articulate about that as well. And Mr. Booth is a member of the Scholastic Bowl team. I think he's the captain of that team. He serves on the International Baccalaureate Advisory Council at Hampton High School, and still play on the tennis team?
Not this year.
Okay, he has played on the tennis team, and I know he's an avid photographer, and he has many, many, many other activities, very active in science, and quite a scholar. And so, Mr. Booth, in recognition of your service as student liaison, 2012-2013, I'm going to present you with this one.
When I first interviewed for the position of student liaison last year... Yes, I am going to tell you a story. Please bear with me for a few minutes. The school board asked me what I thought I could offer, you know, typical interview question, and I didn't want to give them a typical answer. And so I told them the truth. I grew up in private schools. I wasn't a smart kid at Samuel P. Langley Elementary School, and unfortunately, I didn't attend middle school in Hampton City. But when the time came for me to choose a high school, I went to Hampton High School, not because I liked the colors or because my dad's a graduate of it, but because I looked at it, and I saw a school that was more than a school. It was a family. And these past three years with Hampton City Schools, it's felt like I've been adopted. My parents are only part of my parents now. I have more, my teachers, every single person at this table, and I consider Givante my brother. So I'd really like to say thank you to all of you for welcoming me in and for making me feel at home. I wish all of you the best in your future academic and athletic endeavors, and hopefully, I'll see you on national TV one day.
Thank you, and thank you. You are a great audience. Do we not have wonderful kids in Hampton City Schools? Let's give all of them a big round of applause, and thank you for your patience.
Givante.
Mr. Johnson.
That's the grandpa. It's Alan saying.
Yeah, it's just trying to do it.
I might, I might, I might, I might have an idea.
Yeah.
Now that last one.
Anne, have you ever heard the commercial?
This is not over, though.
I asked you when you seen Chantel, was she on Real Estate?
I was like, no, he is on TV.
Are they going to lose?
She's not ready.
I was going to get Jada Jada.
I was serious.
She's going to get a job.
She does real estate on the side.
I know.
That was too funny.
Oh, my.
My, where'd everybody go?
Yeah, really.
It's so empty.
Okay, to all of our honorees in the hall, we love you, and we know you're taking pictures and making dinner plans, but we're still having the meeting, okay? So if you all could just bring it down one notch, we'll be fine. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Stevens, Chair. We do move along to the consent agenda, which consists of items 3.01, 3.02, 3.03, 3.04, 3.05, and 3.06. Is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I move approval of the consent agenda.
Second. It's been moved by Mrs. Phillips and seconded by Mrs. Smith that we approve tonight's consent agenda. Is there any discussion? There being none, Ms. Bowers, would you call for the vote? Ms. Phillips?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Harper?
Aye.
Ms. Henry?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Mr. Pearson?
Aye.
Ms. Mugler?
Aye. Motion carries.
We move on to superintendent and staff reports. I turn things over now to Division Superintendent Dr. Linda Schifflet.
Thank you, Ms. Mugler. Our first report this evening is our SOL writing results, and I do want to let everyone know that at this point, these results are preliminary. They are not official results yet. Dr. Cynthia Cooper will be providing the report. Dr. Cooper?
Good evening, Mrs. Mugler, Mr. Kilgore, Dr. Schifflet, members of the board. I can't jump 19 feet, and I don't have a grade point average of 4.51, but I am pleased to be here tonight to share these results with you. That's a hard act to follow. We have a lot of excellence in this school division. These are our preliminary writing results. As you know, our students took the test in March, and we have gotten the results back and any retests, so let's just hop into it. I wanted first to go over some things that were new about this test. I know that Mrs. Hardy shared with you the changes in standards that we had for this year, and this is the first time that they've been assessed in this new test. So all the testing was done online, even the direct writing, even with elementary school students. We had some very different direct writing prompts, asking for very different kinds of writing and thinking than students have been asked for before. We don't have an essay anymore, we have a short paper. We have an introduction of technology-enhanced items. You've heard about these. These are TEIs, but I put the emphasis on enhanced, because the technology is really just the vehicle. The enhancement is in the type of question that can be asked. So one of these was a hotspot where they had lots of little blanks all through a writing passage, and a bunch of punctuation marks over here on the side, and students were asked to take the punctuation and drag it to the correct spot. But it wasn't a simple matching exercise. There were hotspots there that didn't require any punctuation. So students really had to know mechanics and usage far beyond any standard that they'd ever been asked to demonstrate before. And then I do want to remind you that this is to be considered a new baseline for results. If you look on the DOE's webpage, that is our Superintendent of Public Instruction for the State of Virginia, and that is on the front page of the webpage. She has made it very clear to school boards and her board and the public that all of the new assessments that are coming should be considered the first in a line. And so a new trend line should be established. It's very, very tempting to go back and say, okay, what did we do last year, and did we go up or down from that? And she has cautioned her board and boards around the state to really consider these as new trend lines, as new baselines for a trend to go forward from here. And she has, in another segment, said that we should not consider our results to be any indication that students are learning less, but that we are asking a great deal more. And seeing some of these writing items, I believe that to be totally true. So we're going to jump into the preliminary school pass rates. And I've just given you a quick visual to show you where our schools are. The first thing to take away from that is that we had a very wide range of pass rates. They went from a low in the mid-30s all the way up to an 88% pass rate. We had one school, you can see the 3% is where we're starting with a school below 40%. Then we have about a third of our schools who are in the 40s and 50s. The big chunk of the pie, the 40%, is in the mid to upper 60s. So these are schools who haven't quite met the standard, but they are very close. With some focused work, we can get over that hump. And then we have 13% who met and exceeded the standard. So we have, we have the 70s is passing, and the 80s is well above. So about a quarter of our schools that really are where we need them to be that are leading the pack. I want to give you a different way to look at the results, and that's by grade. Our young people primarily take the test in three grade levels. That's fifth grade, eighth grade, and 10th grade. And you can see that this is almost like the achievement gap, where things got better as students spent more time with us. That is the case with the writing results as well. Third graders, in order to get a pass rate, excuse me, fifth grade, the 12% there, the small blue column, is in fact the advanced scores. The green column are proficient scores. So our fifth graders had six out of 10 students, 60% pass rate. Our eighth grade students brought that up to 63, and our 10th grade students were at Then I wanted to give you a quick look in a slightly different way, and this is taking all of the students, not in individual grade level groups and not in school level groups, but how did the young people do as an aggregate group? And you can see there that we had 9%, nearly 10% of our students in the pass-advanced range, and we had 47 kids who nailed it with a perfect 600. So that's pretty good news to me, that we had that many students score pass-advanced on a test that was significantly different and significantly more challenging than other tests in the past. Then you combine that with a 57% that are pass-proficient, and you see that just about 2/3 of our students nailed this thing right out of the gate. And I think that is extraordinary news. Those are good results. We do have 1/3 of our students that we need to do more work with to bring them over the passing standard. But I want to draw your attention to the fact that this is good news. When 2 out of 3 students made it on the first attempt at a very new test, especially when, Mrs. Henry will know, when we talk about cumulative competencies, that the writing test that kids take at fifth grade is really a culmination of five years' worth of instruction, and only six months of it, from September to March, were in the new standards. And so the fact that we had this many young people, 6 out of 10 of those fifth graders nailed that test and get a pass-proficient or a pass-advanced is extraordinary. The same thing with our eighth and 10th graders. I think another piece of this, these results that I'm excited about, are the fact that this test is a gateway into what we really want. And by that I mean, the test required some creativity, the test required some critical thinking, the test required some problem solving in a very different way of self-expression than students had been asked to deliver before. And so one of the things that our instructional staff has, I guess, lamented over the years is that we have been put in a business of teaching children to do well on picking A, B, C, or D, and to strategically pick between two answers when they can get two out, and that the deep level of learning that is required on this test is exactly what our instructional staff found exciting and the reason that they wanted to commit to teaching. And so we are kind of excited about the move to these new standards. We are excited about the move to this new test. We are excited that 2 out of 3 students got it right away, and we know that we have work to do with the other 1 out of 3 students. So that work will be led by Mrs. Tiffany Hardy, and I would like to invite her to the podium to share a little bit with us about the work in the upcoming year to bring that slice of the pie in with the others. Mrs. Hardy?
Thank you very much, Dr. Cooper. I appreciate that you have provided an overview of the data. And she absolutely hit the nail on the head. We are excited about what this can tell us. There are two ways we look at this data. First of all, it can tell us a lot about what we're doing right already. It tells us a lot about the kind of instructional tools and the strategies that teachers already have a capacity with that are working in the right direction. It also tells us where we need to go and the direction we need to move in. And so our team has already been working at breaking down this data to look at what our next steps will be. One of the things that we'll be looking at is curriculum. As I shared with you earlier in the year, we've already done a complete curriculum overhaul to align with the new standards. We'll now be going back to revise that curriculum to look at the specific skills that need to be emphasized either earlier or more frequently, look at the areas where we see our students are very strong, and identify where our priorities need to be. We always look at the vertical articulation of skills, and we now can look at with the data whether or not we're putting in those critical skills at early enough grades, whether we need to emphasize them at earlier grades, and also look at what we can do with intervention for students in order to make sure that by the time they get to those tested grade levels, we have affirmed those critical skills. So looking at the vertical articulation, and then also the articulation of modes. We had a writing task force that went through and identified the sequence of modes, and by mode of writing, it's like a genre. It's expository or narrative, descriptive, persuasive. Those modes of writing are critical, and they have to be studied in different ways. We went through with this team of teachers to identify the sequence and the order of exploring those modes. Only in learning this year, rather close to the actual test date, that students will now have the possibility in fifth grade of not only having the potential of expository or narrative, but also creative narrative. And a creative narrative, which is a very exciting mode of writing, is not necessarily one that they've spent a lot of time on, because prior to now, the standards have really explored those other modes, and so the emphasis in instruction has been there. So to take a child in the fifth grade and suddenly tell them, "It's not only okay, but it's encouraged for you to write a very creative story about a very far-fetched scenario," that's a new concept for many children. So we'll be looking at where to embed that in. The exciting thing is it's something teachers want to explore and give students an opportunity to utilize. We now have that green light to put in yet another mode of writing that we know will help our students to be more creative thinkers. At the secondary level, we knew that persuasion was one of the potential modes of writing for the eighth grade. We also knew that it would be for the end of course, and for our students in Hampton City Schools, that's 10th grade. But as I shared with you previously, argument is a very sophisticated mode of writing. It requires the writer to not only examine the reasoning behind their position, but also a counterargument, which means they entertain, consider the opposition, and then refute it. Now think about what that actually means. It's a very mature concept. And having our 10th grade students halfway through the year able to examine both sides of a scenario and counter, explain with logic, with passion and emotion, and with ethics, why their position is superior to the opposition, that takes a lot of maturity and sophistication. So building that concept in in earlier grade levels, so that we're spending those five months of the 10th grade year exploring how other writers have used it and exploring sophistication in their own writing, rather than throwing a new mode of writing in, I imagine that in future years, we're going to see great growth, because we know to build those things in earlier. In terms of professional development, supporting our teachers further to explore how to embed structured writing instruction in every single grade level. And while our teachers may be... and counter, explain with logic, with passion and emotion, and with ethics, why their position is superior to the opposition. That takes a lot of maturity and sophistication. So, building that concept in in earlier grade levels so that we're spending those five months of the 10th grade year exploring how other writers have used it and exploring sophistication in their own writing rather than throwing a new mode of writing in, I imagine that in future years, we're going to see great growth because we know to build those things in earlier. In terms of professional development, supporting our teachers further to explore how to embed structured writing instruction in every single grade level. And while our teachers may be excellent writers, giving them the support to help draw that out of students, that takes continual professional development. We now know from the data exactly where we need to focus on to support our teachers so that they can have those writing conferences, so that they can do writing workshop in a way that'll focus on the specific areas where we're still seeing gaps for our students. And we're looking at this as a process, just like writing should be recursive. The process of evaluating instruction and curriculum support also has to be recursive. We begin with the end in mind, and we're looking at ways that we can monitor the changes in instruction. We do so at the classroom, the school, and at the division level. At the classroom level, we'll be looking for how teachers implement strategies. We'll be going in and doing continued walkthroughs, focused observation, and looking at how the teachers are implementing the resources and the techniques that we provide them in professional development at the school level and at the division level. The next step is the feedback. Without feedback, there is no improvement. So, also working with teachers on how they provide appropriate feedback. Not good job or a smiley face on the paper, but that structured feedback that our teachers have been working to embrace and to make a part of their instructional program so that students can reflect on their own writing and continue to improve. Feedback to our teachers about the practice that we're seeing, where there are pervasive areas that are strong, making them become the norm and not isolated moments. And then also, training and working with our administrative staff so that they are empowered to monitor and provide feedback at both of those levels as well. So, it's multi-tiered, working with the students, working with teachers, working with administrators, and continuing to reflect. The first step of this process is where we are right now in reflection. Looking at the data, looking at our curriculum and practices, and then going into where the revisions in our curriculum program and professional development are, and then working through and continuing to cycle back. So, I find the data to be very informative to us. As a new baseline, where do we go from here? Where at that starting point, and what are the next steps? And this is how we intend to support our division through this transition.
Questions?
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Mrs. Hardy and Dr. Cooper. Questions from board members? Mrs. Smith?
Hello, Mrs. Hardy. As Dr. Cooper said, there was a wide range of pass rates for the schools. There are some schools that only had 40% of the students pass and some that had over 80% pass.
Yes.
So, from that, I assume that you'll be looking at the schools that did so well, and you learn from that. But I guess my question was, by grade level, was there a certain grade level that really saw that range, or was that the same for all the grade levels?
Well, the range is very wide among all the grade levels. Because there are more elementary schools, you will have more bottom-line pass rates. And I think we saw a larger gap there. Correct me if I'm wrong, but I saw the greater gap in the 5th grade. And then up in 8th grade, and then a little bit more narrow gap in the 70s and up to the high 70s, and even in a school in the 80s and the high school. So, the range is larger in the 5th grade.
Okay, all right.
But you're absolutely right. First of all, looking at the schools that had high success rates, but there are places where there's excellent teaching going on in the schools that had the lowest pass rate. So, what we're looking for is where are those best practices? Where are the teachers meeting success across the whole division? And then also taking into consideration that each of the schools are working with different students. And so, if we're looking at schools that maybe had great success with students with disabilities, even if an overall pass rate wasn't as high as others, wanting to capture what they're doing with those groups of students to enable them to reach success and then making those models and sharing it across the division. Absolutely.
Great, thank you.
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
I mean, Phillips, sorry. That's me. This was the first year I had kids take it online. And then I have a child in a lower grade. Now, when my older kids took it, they wrote it out. In 5th grade?
Yes.
The 5th grade one, are they doing all the punctuation stuff that you're talking about? That Dr. Cooper was talking about?
There are those items, but of course, the challenge and the rigor and the complexity of the items is exponentially more difficult at the upper levels. So, the example I gave at a previous board meeting, just to raise a little bit of the shock value we all experienced, was the one that had over several thousand possible permutations. That was a high school example. And in the middle school, they may have three or four punctuation items and only a couple of the drop zones that they have to go into. And at the elementary level, you're looking at one form of punctuation and several drop zones, or a drop zone and several forms of punctuation. So, the challenge is much greater at each level. But having to know the rules of usage and of grammar, absolutely. They are in all the levels.
Because I just don't remember when my boys were in elementary school. And they did well on their writing SOLs, but I don't remember the whole punctuation thing. So, that's what I'm curious about, you know, how it's going in the 5th grade. And I'm assuming that they're going to put more of that into their teaching and everything.
Absolutely. We've actually written sample flip charts using the Promethean Board so that teachers can embed those in as ongoing practice. The more years a student sees that, it becomes ingrained in them. Naturally, there's going to be more familiarity. In the previous test, students were just given four answer choices. And they were given sentences. And all they had to do was figure out if there was one little piece of the sentence that was wrong, the answer choice was wrong. And so, they didn't really have to think through the rules of punctuation. All they had to do was figure out which answer choices seemed the best. That doesn't actually measure whether they know how to use it in their own writing. The exciting thing about this is that now, using the technology, we can actually assess whether a student knows where a comma, an exclamation point, a question mark, or period should go, and the type of sentence that it would dictate that. In the past, it was literally just either a guessing game, and they had a 25% chance of getting it right, right off the bat. And it was also a matter of if they could figure out a little piece of the sample was wrong, then they could get rid of the whole answer choice, not really understanding why. So, you're absolutely right. The old test did not measure to the degree that the new test does. And that's why Debbie Feringer, who's working in our 3 through 5 classes, and Darlene Ingram, who's working in our K-2 classes, our two teacher specialists have been working on identifying how to make grammar instruction, which has always been a part of the curriculum, but going back and helping teachers to identify ways to put in that more rigorous study of grammar and how to practice it in authentic writing experiences.
Thank you.
That was a good way of comparing that past and present.
Thank you.
Yes.
Mrs. Henry?
When we went through this fun experience with math and had a whole new adjustment to a new... I appreciate that Ms. Cooper, Dr. Cooper is being so positive and saying this is, you know, our first attempt at this and so forth, and it is. But I wonder if, as you look at the results, they are as astoundingly markedly impacted in English as they were in math across the state?
As we're looking at them across the state? We don't have the final results.
They don't give you anything?
They will. They will. And in dialoguing with my colleagues, absolutely unofficially, there was a significant impact on performance. However, we're looking for some essays to be...
I know that you're looking for positive.
No, 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 no.
And I appreciate that.
We don't have final results because we can still submit. And what we've done is we've gone back and looked at students who have significant discrepancies between the two scorers. You can actually look at the report and identify if one scorer gave a significantly discrepant scoring to the other. We can then look at the actual response from the student to gauge whether or not they got an elevated score that was a false positive or whether or not that second reader was too critical. And we can resubmit those. So, it's possible that we could be looking for an increase in any of these grades. We've identified quite a few students who are in that position. And talking with our colleagues, yes. Everybody has seen this new baseline be dramatically different than what we would have expected in previous years.
So, you have new approach, new kinds of writing prompts, and readers that have to adjust to all this as well. So, their reliability is a little off perhaps, too. Or they're having to get into the adjust as well?
Absolutely. And I wouldn't fault the readers. I know the kind of training that they get.
But it still affects the test validity if it's the first time out of the gate.
Which is why I'm glad the state does give us an opportunity to resubmit. Because given that it's something that is subjective, we appreciate that there's a chance. We don't resubmit for the multiple choice. It is what it is. But we appreciate that they're willing to take a second look, especially if we look at a paper and say, you know, based on the standards, based on the rubrics, we feel that this should get a second glance. And we're talking about students who are close or who met, who were at that, you know, that cusp of the cut score, who, you know, maybe one point difference in the scoring of the short paper would make the difference for a pass or a fail.
I'm just hoping that we can explain. It's very difficult for people who are not in the system, who are not dealing with this, even for parents, to understand that this is a whole new ballgame, that you have to practically... That the skills are much more complex, that the demands are much higher, and that it isn't that all of a sudden, we all got stupid over here. And I get a little, you know, while I appreciate you and Dr. Cooper being positive, I get a little frustrated with looking at the big smile on the face of our state superintendent who says, "Oh, yes, we have a much harder test now, and it's going to be much more difficult for all of you to pass. Ha ha." It's very frustrating for me as a member of the public to be dealing with somebody who thinks it's okay to just zap it to all of us with that much of a cheerful attitude.
Mrs. Henry, I wanted to recommend there is a document that makes it very clear about this new baseline, and that is the VDOE's Accountability Measures. And they have a little PDF file that's under their Accountability Measures. And when you look at math, they set the new standards and the goals for the next six years. And when you look at English, they did not. They are all blank, waiting for this year's results because they knew that the results were going to be dramatically different. So, that is one way to add credence to that discussion, although I realize that would be hard to have at the gas station or the hairdresser or some other place. But it is available online, and we can get that for you.
Thank you.
And honestly, I have absolutely no problem. I relish the opportunity to continue to help our parents understand because truly, this is the right direction to go in education. The way we were headed, we weren't teaching our children critical thinking. I now feel much more confident that every one of our testers this year has learned so much more about how to write to different purposes and how to use language to their advantage. As we work on improving and perfecting our instructional skills and giving students time with these new measures and the new standards, we're going to see that the scores will catch up with exactly what we know we need to be doing with them instructionally. So, I think this first year, yes, it may produce some growing pains, and our parents should feel welcome to contact us, and we will walk every last one of them through it. It's the right direction to go. And I would rather we face those challenging questions rather than the status quo of the old testing system. So, I know that it's hard to look at those initial bottom-line numbers, but I don't think they capture everything in terms of the potential we have.
Other questions from board members? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
You, too.
Our next report this evening is an update on our extremely excellent Fine Arts Department. Dr. Johnson, are you going to be...? Mrs. Greasy? Good to have you with us tonight.
Good evening. It's nice to be here, and I'm pleased to be able to give you an overview of our Fine Arts Department, which includes both art and music. I'm Vivian Greasy. I'm the curriculum leader for Fine Arts. My specialty is the visual arts. Mr. Kelly D. is the music teacher specialist, and of course, his specialty is music. Our mission in the Fine Arts Department is to instill in each of our students the ability to appreciate a variety of artistic endeavors as well as to perpetuate a lifelong cultural involvement so that they continually, whether they go into art or music or not, that they continually support it throughout their life. We believe the arts promote 21st century learning, and they do this in a variety of ways. We help develop critical thinking skills. We also help students think logically, creatively. We also help them make hypotheses and make plans and succeed to the end of that. Our goals in our department is to increase the use of technology in music and art classrooms. We'd like to continue to increase the number of AP students, both in the art and music classes. We'd like to expand the media arts offerings in both art and music. We also would like to create a computer graphic arts and computer animation citywide student art exhibit, which we don't currently have. In addition, we'd like to create a sculpture and cultural arts citywide student art exhibit. That, again, we do not have. The initiatives for this coming year, we'd like to implement smart music in our secondary classrooms, music classrooms. This is a student growth assessment program. We'd also like to implement Charms, which is a data management system for our high school band teachers. We'd like to implement guitars in the classroom on the elementary level. Increase the use of iPads in the art history courses, AP art history courses. Expand the use of digital drawing tablets in both computer graphic arts and the computer art animation course. And also increase the use of master classes and guest clinicians in the music courses as well as implementing something that we haven't done, and that's bringing in some guest artists into the art classroom. Our instructional focus because of this is that we would like to provide smart music training to not only the teachers, but to the students and their parents to explain what it is and how to use it. Introduce grades 3 through 5 performing ensembles. These might include orf, recorder, woodwind, or percussion instruments. We'd like to increase student exposure to professionals in the field of art and music, that they can make a living at that, and a very good one. And we'd also like to provide training to the AP art history students and teachers on how to create eBooks using iPad apps. If you've ever seen the AP art history textbook, it's about this fact. And they have to learn all that for the AP exam. So, we thought this might be a helpful way of getting them to know that material a little bit better. Our curricular programming lasts all year long, from August all the way through June. I'm not going to go through all of these because it's been a long evening and you have these, but I'd like to highlight that we do have our high school art exhibit this year. We had over 300 pieces of student artwork at the convention center. And it was a wonderful show if you can plan to attend this coming year. We also expanded our AP studio art portfolio workshops with Hampton University Museum so that we included the portfolio prep students. We have our combined elementary honors choir and our middle school honors choir performance every year. As you go through, we have a number of other concert series as well as art shows throughout the year. Real briefly, I'm going to go through the curriculum for both the visual arts and the music just to give you an overview that we don't just do painting and drawing and seeing. That it is a quite robust curriculum. The visual arts curriculum has five strands. We teach the elements and principles of art, which are the mechanics of art, art-making, which is the actual exploration of the media, aesthetics, criticism, and history. On the elementary level, besides emphasizing those five areas, we also are interested in helping the students actively listen, work cooperatively, as well as do the skill building. Middle school continues that skill building into media techniques. We also encourage self-expression, and then we work on character-building skills within the classroom. High school art is everything from our basic art classes to our advanced. Here, we not only concentrate on skill building, art media, we also want the students to have a personal statement and be aware of the culture that's around them and their professionalism. And we have four strands for our students, and they can take courses in any of these. They don't have to follow one particular strand. But we developed these so that we could address any student who wants to take art irregardless of what their level is or their focus. So, we have our art foundation courses. Then we have our mastery artistic courses for those students that might be wanting to go into the field of art in college or as a career. We have art history, and we also have art technology courses, which are the computer graphic arts and computer animation, three levels. The music curriculum has six strands. It's melody, harmony, rhythm, and form. Those are the equivalent of the elements and principles on the art side. It's how you create your music. We have performance production, cultural context, music theory, judgment, criticism, and aesthetics. Besides teaching all of these, we have on the elementary level, we try to get them to be active, to practice active listening, cooperation, and be comfortable performing. Middle school band and chorus are also that developmental, going through those strands. But we also encourage them to be performers, to production, and also to show character-building skills through those performances and their music. building skills through those performances and their music. The high school instrumental program, we have beginner through artistic. This, again, we work on performance building, skill building, professionalism, content knowledge, being able to be a good performer, to represent yourself. And on the, the instrumental music side, we have four strands. Again, students don't have to remain in one, they can go in between. Excuse me. The basic one is band performance courses. Those are the ones we typically think of, concert band and so forth, all the way to a jazz band. We have guitar, marching band, and then our non-performance music courses, which are the AP music theory, music theory, and also music production, which is in the lower right-hand corner, and that's with the Pro Tools software and hardware. Our high school vocal music, again, teaching through those initial strands. We concentrate on artistic level, production, performance, skill building, as well as performance skills and professionalism, and working cooperatively. And down below, you'll see several other courses, everything from our mixed chorus into those specialty small vocal ensembles. I know this is a little hard to read, but I think you have this. I'm not going to go through all of them. These are some of the highlights for our division, or for, for our Fine Arts Department. We've continued to strengthen our partnerships with community organizations, and we have quite a big list there. Every year, we try to add more to that. We also did a jazz through the ages for Jazz Appreciation Month at Andrews, which was a wonderful event, and they committed to doing that, excuse me, again, next year. We have several shows throughout the year as well. To conclude, we have some special recognitions that we're very proud of in the division. Bethel High School was recognized as an All-Virginia Band. We have two more National Board certified teachers, which bring the total to eight for the Fine Arts Department. We had 24 students be selected for all district band and chorus. The music stu, we had a music student win the United States Air Force You've Got Talent competition. Of course, we had our first place visual arts winner in the regional Hampton Roads Student Gallery Competition, which is a South Side competition, but it encompasses the whole southern part of Virginia. And for us to have the winner was really exceptional because we bid out Virginia Beach and all of that. So we're quite proud of that. We had a national winner for the Sister Cities Competition and the Award of Merit for Art for the National Reflections Contest. And we recently found out that we had a winner from Kickatan, a young lady, who won the Bobby Scott Congressional Art District, Art Competition. So she will be representing Bobby Scott's congressional district. Her artwork has already been framed, and it will be in Washington DC and on display at the US Capitol for the coming year, along with all the other winners from all the other congressional districts across the United States. So we're real excited that we had that winner as well. So it's really been a wonderful year, and we have to thank our wonderful teachers for being able to do this, but thank you.
Thank you very much. You all are very busy in Fine Arts.
Yes, we are.
Lots going on.
Yes.
Questions or comments from board members?
I had one question.
Mrs. Phillips?
I was looking here on the page with the highlights, and it, it talks about community partnerships. Have y'all looked at any type of partnership with the Hampton Arts Foundation or Commission?
Yes. We've, we've been in talks with them about some, some of the ways that we can have a partnership. They've come and asked us, and we're working on that.
Oh, okay, great.
Mm-hmm.
Mrs. Henry?
Thank you so much, Dr. Greasy.
Oh, not doctor yet.
I went so close as she's teaching.
I'm getting close.
Working on it. I just wanted to say that, that we all enjoy all your presentations. We all love to come to schools, and everybody does, to hear the kids sing and to see the art shows. But I think what people may not realize is how much personal support the two of you give to all of those outreach efforts. I think teachers who work with you are very pleased with the amount of encouragement and support, and just simple things, like if you're going to participate in an, in an art show, Ms. Greasy has gotten all the art teachers really nice portfolios to haul all that stuff around in, and she will do the hauling for them. I know this because one of the art shows that, that she mentioned is one that I helped sponsor, but it's, it's just little things that make a big difference to a teacher's life, and therefore, their ability to do things for their kids. Because all the teachers want to do stuff for their kids. They want to showcase their kids' talents and their, their artwork and their abilities. But that extra support that you give them is very, very important, and, and behind the scenes, you all are very modest about all of it, but I'm sure it's appreciated by all the teachers that work with you.
Well, thank you, and it's easy to do when you have wonderful teachers to work, work for. Thank you.
Other, Mr. Booth?
If I may continue what you said, Ms. Henry. Ms. Greasy's support doesn't just stop with the teachers. I had a conflict between an AP art studio exam and an IB exam, and Ms. Greasy herself came to my school, helped me finish preparing my portfolio, and submitted, so I could get both done. I thought that was incredible. Just a little side note.
Thank you.
I do also have to give a shout out to Kelly D. I don't know of anybody in this school division that gives up more of their personal time at football games, and parades, and holiday concerts. I see him everywhere I go.
Yes.
And so I know he, and, you know, both of you give up a tremendous amount of your personal time, and I want to say a very special thanks to both of you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Greasy.
Thank you.
Mr. D. Dr. Shiflett?
Our next report is a Title I update. Dr. Cagiano?
Looking for members of the team that they, do you want me up front, please?
They were being shy back there. They didn't think you were going to call them up.
Well, good evening, Madam Chair, Mr. Kilgore, members of the board, Dr. Shiflett. The purpose of this presentation tonight is to share a status update with some of the program changes that took place in our Title I department during the current school year, as well as to present for your deliberation the 2013-2014 Title I Part A grant. As we look at the agenda for this particular presentation, we'll have several of our team members presenting. First, Mrs. Shonda Epps, our coordinator of family engagement, will talk about the work that's been done this year, really to move from a focus from parental involvement to family engagement. Next, Mrs. Kim Richardson will join us to talk about some of the highlights this year regarding the implementation of the coaching program in the areas of reading and math. And then I'll come back to the podium just to provide a brief overview of the 2013-2014 Title I Part A grant. So at this time, I'll turn the podium over to Ms. Epps.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I have the pleasure of presenting information about our newly revised family engagement program. We transitioned the program from parent involvement to family engagement this year to present a new perspective and a new approach to working with our families in the Title I schools, looking at actively engaging our parents as partners, as opposed to viewing them as merely clients in our schools, but looking at ways that we can actively work with them and get their feedback. So with that, engagement emphasizes the need for commitment and partnership between schools and families focused on student achievement. And while we have in the past always looked at including academic-focused areas for our events and programs for families, we looked at really focusing on data-driven events. So looking at how we can address some of the key areas in our schools through our events, our Family Night events, also looking at how we can also engage the community as well. So looking at increasing the number of community and business partners, our faith-based partners is, and also working more closely with our military bases. Family engagement this year, looked at linking more directly to student, student learning, but also looked at how we can make those connections between the home, school, and the community. So again, we looked at not serving clients, but looking at how to engage our parents and guardians as partners. Part of that effective family engagement requires the schools to develop a relationship build on, building process focused on listening. So instead of just giving parents a checklist of things that we want or that are required, we're looking at how we can actively engage them in the decision-making process. I myself, we're mandated to actually hold a parent advisory council meeting every year, and I normally hold two meetings. And in that meeting, I convene parents from all of our Title I schools, and I basically review all of the program requirements with them. I take them through this parents, annual parent survey data, and we also look at the parent policy as well. Those are all requirements. But I also allow them to provide feedback and suggestions for programs for the upcoming school year as well. In our schools, also, all of our Title I schools have a parent action team, our Action Team for Partnerships, where we actively engage parents, school staff members, and the community as well. And we've also incorporated technology, using technology to engage families. So many of our schools now have email, emo lists that they send out information to families, as well as their school websites. We also have frequent surveys, so we're constantly getting feedback. We do event evaluations after every event, so we're also getting immediate feedback on how we can tweak our current programs. Our Title I schools all have a family engagement specialist, and that is a transition from the parent involvement facilitator position, formerly known as PIFs. We don't have an acronym for family engagement specialist, so.
Good.
Yes. So we just call them specialists. So, but the family engagement specialists will work closely with the families and, as well as the school community, to coordinate multiple opportunities for families to be engaged and be a part of their child's learning. And just a quick overview of this slide, as far as the transition from involvement to engagement, we're looking at how we can move into empowering our families. So looking at moving away from, again, telling our families what we need, just basically communicating our goals and objectives, but not giving them a part in how we actually execute our activities. So we're moving away from telling our, our parents how they can contribute, but moving towards listening to them. So again, actively engaging them in our, in our school committees, but looking at how we can work together and partner for student achievement. And some of the outcomes of listening to our parents, and again, the feedback from the surveys, they've requested information on employment listings, preparing for job interviews, also looking at parenting workshops, how they can help their child do homework and things of that nature. So again, looking at engaging parents in the education process by providing them with information and resources, but also, again, focusing our events so that they're data-driven and actually supporting the school goals for the school year. And these are the program changes, again. We transitioned from the PIF to family engagement specialist, and they serve on their school's leadership teams, and they also serve on the member, serve as a member of their Title I collaborative learning teams as well. This year, the family engagement specialists meet with their grade levels on a frequent basis, again, to stay in tune with what the needs are in the classroom and how they can partner with the teachers to make sure the events tie in to learning for the students. All of our procedures are streamlined so that all of the programs look, operate the same way throughout the division, so that if a parent is at Tyler, they can go to Smith, if they transition to Smith, and have the same services and support provided there. All of our schools are actively engaging partnerships and, again, working with families and the school community. This year, a new component was added. They are now conducting home visits, and our home visits are based on building relationships to connect families to the school. So they're not the traditional home visit that are, that are usually taking place as far as social services, but our, our home visits are really centered around building relationships and connecting the families with the school, and actually engaging them in the home, and hopefully, building that relationship so that they will come into the school as well. The home visits, and this is some of the feedback from the family engagement specialist, they provide the opportunity to better understand the family and students. They provide additional information to identify the family's needs, additional opportunities to build relationships with families by connecting them to resources and services. And the teachers have seen the home visits as a resource for them to kind of follow up and communicate with families as well. In the upcoming school year, we're looking to transition from the name Home Visit to Grow Visit, and looking at how we can utilize that acronym to engage families in a positive way through the home visits. And another change this year is that I actually am a direct supervisor for the family engagement specialist and conduct their evaluations, sorry. Other factors that contributed to our success this year, again, we have more direct and intentional outreach to our families. We have a clear and concise program framework centered around student achievement. Again, data-driven events that support the family and student learning. We have increased collaborations with our school staff as a result of our home visits, and our team approach to working with teachers and actively meeting with the grade-level teams and Title I interventionists as well. We have seen an increase in partnerships with our families and with our community partners. And by having a more structured volunteer program, we're utilizing our volunteers in the best way possible, so taking their skills and abilities and actually connecting them with things that are needed in the schools. And we have continued our focus on relationship building with our families. Another thing that the family engagement specialist identified as a positive note is just using the dedication software and having that ability to actually engage parents through student, using student data. And they've seen an increase in their collaboration with their teachers, and just seen an increase overall in their value of their role in the school. Thank you. I'll now turn the presentation over to Kimberly Richardson, who is our Title I coordinator for instruction.
Good evening.
Good evening.
We are very excited to begin an instructional coaching program in the Title I department for Hampton City Schools. Our district mission, of course, is every child, every day, whatever it takes. And for the coaches, it was every teacher, every day, whatever it takes. We support the district vision and mission by supporting teachers with the challenging work of advancing student achievement. So it's still ultimately about student performance. And we worked within the already-set programming of the PLCs in each school to collaboratively work and focus on learning with teachers. Now, this was a very big endeavor because we were not teacher specialists, and we were not evaluators. This was a position that a couple of people had as far as a title, but the work was very, very different than any of us ever could imagine. We began our program by researching these three major resources, taking the lead, New Roles for Teacher and School-Based Coaches, which you might have heard about, the ten roles of teacher leaders, being mentors, being resource providers. How to Build an Instructional Coaching Program for Maximum Capacity. We met these ladies in the NASTED Conference two years ago, and they were in the same boat as me, how to begin a program. There's plenty of research about instructional coaching, but nothing about how to actually begin a program. And then results coaching, Kathy Key and Vicky Deering actually coming here to Hampton for two days last summer and doing intense training with all of our coaches, as well as myself, our leadership coach, Eric Stone, some other members of our team. And that is the training where we realized that we were going to have to change every element of how we thought, how we spoke, and how we acted before we got into the classrooms. We are operating from the model of Glickman's Model of Supervision, which basically addresses being directive with teachers, being non-directive, or being collaborative. And in order to be a coach, we found that we were able to work collaboratively with teachers who were very committed and had very high skills, and if, if you would, I will call it low, low-skill, high-will, high-skill. It was very easy to work collaboratively with teachers that were in the bottom-right quadrant. They had high skills, and they just needed a little bit of motivation. They needed someone to help challenge them. They are the teachers that have been doing this for a while, and, you know, I've got this, but having a coach in the classroom to help them reflect and help challenge some of the ideas and present some other strategies helped that teacher change their practices. We, we did not, we were not advised through our training to work with teachers that required directive supervision, because it is not our role to go in and tell a teacher what to do. That was a role that was left to the administration. We did also work with teachers that we consider the master teachers, and unfortunately, a lot of the time, they are left alone, and because they know what they're doing and their test scores are great, but those teachers also But those teachers also need to have an opportunity to reflect on their practice and to continue to bring fresh ideas into the classroom. So this was our overall model, although it's a supervision model, we worked within that to try to find the best coachees for coaching activities. When we look at the coaching activities, we had to think about the levels of intensity. You cannot start in a classroom with, over on the right, Level III activities, which cause a little anxiety. We were brand-new people, some new to buildings. Here we are, here to help you, and everyone is not always willing to open their doors. But fortunately, again, when you're looking at a professional learning community and if we're focusing on learning and growing, that did help the process. But we began by building relationships with the reading specialists, with the interventionists in the schools, and just going in and kind of being a gift giver. The coaches would make initial lesson plans for the very beginning of the year to help relieve some of the stress of the teachers. And just becoming a resource provider, which was one of those roles as I spoke to earlier. And then as we moved on through the year, we began to be involved in more direct coaching activities, such as observing a teacher but providing non-evaluative feedback, allowing the teacher an opportunity to have a coaching conversation about how they felt things went. Coaches do a lot of co-teaching with teams and teachers. And they also modeled lessons. They would have teachers observe for specific look fours. We are hoping to go as deep next year as particular lesson studies and to come on the tail end of professional learning communities with peer observations. So this, these levels are how we kind of progressed through the, through the year, excuse me. We had intense training. The coaches actually did not begin in the buildings until the second marking period. The coaching training that I shared earlier was a four-day, we did two days in August and two days in September with intent, intensive training on the art of coaching, the whole communication spectrum of listening and paraphrasing and giving reflective feedback and questioning and clarifying. We did our own Title I Coach Development Series each quarter at the end of the quarter during the testing, when usually the activities of the coach were minimized. Because of the testing schedules, we worked with our Coordinator of Organizational Development, Heather Peterson, and developed opportunities for the coaches to learn about their own strengths with StrengthsFinder and Myers-Briggs so that they knew what they brought to the table in order to help understand their own strengths in areas of communication and management in order to work with the teachers that they worked with. Our coaching language, in order to help talk to teachers for reflective practice, we learned about feedback and that giving feedback to a teacher is not evaluating them or telling them what they did wrong, but helping to highlight pieces that they wanted to work on, goals that they set for themselves. And we did a big piece on adult learning and motivation because they do not learn the same way students do. And we have to make sure that when we have job embedded professional development for teachers, that it's something that they will use, that they see the value in it, and that they're able to implement it immediately. We wanted to make sure we did not bump heads with anybody in our division that also touches teachers. And we spent a lot of time, being very purposeful, in working with the curriculum leaders, Sue Lively with New Teacher Mentors and Joan Davis, all of the teacher specialists, our Title I Leadership Coach, the CITTs, to make sure that, okay, when we're working with a teacher, this is what we're doing. When you're working with a teacher, here's the difference. And actually, our, one of our best sessions was with the New Teacher Mentors because they loved the fact that the coaches had been trained in communication and that they could focus on, let me help you get set up in this classroom, but this coach here is going to help you with all of the specifics with, with curriculum and content and the questions that they may not have been able to answer. This year, we also had a Title I Support Collaborative Learning Team. All of the coaches as well as Dr. Caggianno, myself, Eric Stone, anyone that goes into the Title I buildings, we sat down once a month and had reflective conversation about the work that we're all doing, any of the kudos and best practices that we saw in our building because we are all every which way. And it was an opportunity for us to have conversation about the support that we're all providing in the same schools. We had a lot of successes and challenges in year one. We did realize that given the correct audience, coaches were able to assist teachers in improving their instructional practice and positively impacting student performance. If you recall the Glickman quadrants that I showed you earlier, it was a little more difficult to make progress if coaches were working with teachers that required a more directive approach and were not able to work within the collaborative or non-collaborative model. A hundred percent of the teachers that we surveyed, over 65 of the teachers that worked one-on-one with these ladies and gentlemen here, 100% of them felt that the coaches offered feedback, observations, and ideas which brought potential solutions to their instructional challenges. And we don't usually have a lot of surveys with that type of percentage. The coaches, when they were surveyed, felt that there were more needs in the buildings that they had time to address and answer. And we're very excited that our model next year will not require them to share three schools, but they'll be able to be between two schools. And we'll be expanding that model into our middle schools as well. I am excited to introduce to you Crystal Midlich, one of our Language Arts Coaches and a teacher that she worked with at Booker Elementary, Karen Stevenson.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
This is my seventh year with Hampton City Schools. I was previously a teacher in kindergarten, fourth, and fifth grade, and I transferred from the classroom to become a reading coach this year. After graduating with my Masters in Curriculum and Instruction in Reading Education from the University of Virginia, I wanted the opportunity to use my degree to help teachers and students. So I was very excited to begin the work as a coach and to support classroom teachers. The work of a classroom teacher, and I knew myself, is very demanding and at times very overwhelming. So I wanted to be someone that the teachers could turn to for a listening ear, helpful feedback, curriculum support, and positive encouragement. And this year has been an incredible learning experience for me. I was able to work in three different Title I schools, Booker, Langley, and Phillips, and had a great experience at each one of them. My various roles included co-planning and co-teaching with teachers in grade levels, observing teachers and meeting with them for feedback conferences, attending CLTs and data meetings, and then also providing instructional resources for teachers. I was very encouraged by the growth that I saw, the positive encouragement that teachers then pass on to their students, and seeing the impact that they were able to have on student progress. Ms. Stevenson, a second-grade teacher at Booker Elementary School, is a great example of one of the teachers that I had the pleasure of working with this school year. She was always willing to try something new and to think outside of the box, and she devoted many hours to meeting with me, planning with me, and teaching along with me. Her hard work, openness, and commitment led to positive relationships in her classroom, and we were able to see phenomenal growth in her second-grade classroom. And I'll give her the opportunity to share that with you.
All right. I'm here. I'm Karen Stevenson, second-grade teacher at Booker Elementary School. And I'm here to tell you that I was really helped by the reading coach, Crystal Midlich. Of course, I can only speak for myself. She came into my room early in the year and observed me and the classroom. From her observations, she helped me fine-tune the Language Arts Block and my teaching to help me get the best results. I've been teaching for over 30 years, but there are always new practices that research shows that makes teaching better and learning more effective. Word Study was one of those things for me. It was one of those new programs that has come along in the past decade. And Dr. Johnson, though, last year I kept saying, "Word Study, Word Study." This kind of instruction was new to me, and it requires students' active involvement and thinking. Mrs. Midlich was quick to assess and assist with that program and any other reading-related problem or question that I had. She supplied additional instruction and instructional materials, presented reading and writing strategies, came in once a week after school to help with planning, offered her materials, management, and organizational ideas, and modeled lessons. There are always special people in our life to whom we are forever grateful, and she is one of those. With Mrs. Midlich's assistance, advice, and guidance, my class made tremendous gains this school year, and the results speak for themselves. My class went from 26.3% passing on the first Language Arts Benchmark Test to 88.9% passing the Language Arts Test for the fourth ninth week. Teachers need support, even seasoned teachers, even experienced teachers. And I'm thankful for the support given to me by my principal, my team teachers, and especially Mrs. Midlich.
Thank you very much, Ms. Stevenson. I think I've said it before to the board, but my predecessor, Dr. Mildred Sexton, did an outstanding job of really putting together a phenomenal team. And Michonne Epps is recognized nationally, and I know in the very near future, Ms. Kim Richardson is going to be as well for the deliberate effort she's taken to really put this program together. And with the work of the coaches, you know, a lot of principals got our ear when this decision was made and said, "I don't know, you know, you guys are taking a lot of all-star teachers out of the classroom." But it's one of those things where the impact that these folks are having throughout Booker, throughout our Title I schools has been phenomenal. And I want to thank them for taking the time out of their schedules to join us here tonight. And I'm sorry, Ms. Bowers, I have a few more things to say.
Oh.
Make sure I got them all.
I know. As you all are well aware, we are projected to experience an 8% reduction in federal funds for the upcoming school year. So what this slide here denotes is 2013, 2014 school year. We're looking at a grant allocation of $5,544,286. And when you look to the far right there, the per pupil expenditure, you can see what's happened with the economic downturn going back to 2009, significant decrease in federal funding. And back then, it was, you know, $2,000, $2,013 per student. And just a quick recap, our schools receive allocation based on that PPE. So you take the number of low-income students in a school, multiply it by the PPE, and then that's the school's allocation. So next year, we are looking at an allocation per pupil, 784. With that said, however, we will be serving an increased number of students, 4,515. And I'm pleased and proud to present, we're continuing to put a lot of emphasis and resources into human, human resources, personnel. So we will be moving and increasing the number of teachers working in a support capacity, supplemental capacity from 39 to 42 and a half. And we will be decreasing the number of Title I schools served from 14 to 12. Before I share that list of schools, 12 schools for next year, I wanted to speak briefly about some of the status change for some of the select schools as well as the impact to select staff. As noted here, the First Bullet Craft Elementary, Langley Elementary, and Phillips Elementary will no longer receive Title I funding for the upcoming school year. And this really does not have as much to do with the 8% reduction as it does to a change in status for some of our middle schools, or our one middle school and one pre-K through eight school. So next year, we will be serving Lindsey Middle School, will be a Title I school. In Hampton, for years, we've chosen to place our eggs in the K-5 basket. And the school can be a Title I school anywhere from 35% low-income students on up. And what the federal guidance says is when it hits that 75% threshold, we're obligated, it's mandatory that we service that school. So Lindsey Middle School currently has a low-income population of 77%, so they will become a Title I school. And then there's been a change in interpretation of federal guidelines when you look at the pre-K through eight piece. In previous years, state interpretation of that language has been, we can look at Andrews pre-K through eight, and we can just choose to serve that K through five grade span. They're saying really, pre-K through eight now is its own entity. So we're looking at middle schools, high schools, elementary schools, and now pre-K through eight schools. Andrews has a low-income percentage right now of 73%. So it's really our choice as a school division if we choose to serve them as a Title I school. Obviously, Andrews has needs, and it makes sense to serve a school with that higher population, particularly when you look at the elementary population of low-income students. So with that said, to give you some numbers, last year, this current year, excuse me, 271 students being identified as low-income students at Andrews, that number increases to 874. Next year, at Lindsey, we'll pick up 537, based on this year's numbers, low-income students. So when you look at a school's allocation, you're talking over $1 million of a $5.5 million grant just for Lindsey and Andrews pre-K through eight. So 20% of the grant, and suffice to say, we're no longer able to maintain the status for all of our elementary schools. The other thing with, you see there, notes of interest here, the second and third bullet, you're either a targeted assistance model or a school-wide model. And for that last bullet there, Lindsey, the state expects when you come in new to Title I, that you serve a targeted assistance model. So you're kind of, you're developing criteria, you're identifying students, kind of ranking and serving select students with your funds. In a school-wide model, anybody and everybody is eligible for Title I supplemental dollars. So the anticipation would be if Lindsey remains for the 14, 15, that they would move to school-wide status perhaps. Taking a look at the funding, or taking a look at the impact on staff, Langley was here earlier tonight. We have changed the funding stream for the Langley Family Engagement Specialist from a Fund 60 to a Fund 50 position. With over 50% of the student population, or approximately 50% of the student population being comprised of English, second-language students, we feel that that position is really integral to the success and the support of the families in that school. So while Langley won't be a Title I school, they will still have the Family Engagement position, and she'll still continue to work closely with our Title I Family Engagement Specialists. The Smith Elementary Family Engagement Specialist, again, because of the number of dollars now going to Lindsey and Andrews, some of our schools don't have quite as much funding, and Smith is an example where they just can't fund the same full-time positions they've had this year. So we will be reducing the Family Engagement Specialist and the Reading Interventionist from full-time to part-time. The Reading Interventionist who currently holds that position just secured the middle grades interventionist position, Reading Interventionist at Andrews pre-K through eight, so she'll move into that. The Lindsey Middle School Family Engagement Specialist position is opening up for interviews, and anyone who's interested in applying is currently an elementary Family Engagement Specialist can apply. And so it might create a little bit of a chain reaction. Long story short, we did have one resignation for a Family Engagement Specialist. So no one will lose a position next year, but one person will move from full-time to part-time. We are not replacing Mary Wallen's position. She was our leadership coach who retired in January 2013, so we'll reduce that position from two to one. As Ms. Richardson mentioned earlier, we are very pleased to increase the support for instructional coaches. We heard that loud and clear from teachers and principals. So now, rather than these folks having to share three schools, really, they'll be spending 50% of their time at one school, 50% at another school, and really making a more significant impact. You saw the 39 go to 42 and a half positions. Here's where it comes in, the last two bullets, middle school coaches. So for Andrews pre-K through eight for the middle grades, they'll also receive a pair of coaches. They have a large pot to fund that in Lindsey Middle School as well. And then the middle school at Andrews will also receive a pair of interventionists, as will Lindsey Middle. So the list doesn't change too much with the exception of those three schools falling off that I mentioned and Lindsey Middle School being added to the list of 12 schools. And lastly, just four measurable objectives that you'll find in the grant that's before you tonight. I think, I think I shared it at the beginning. I think we're on later for the deliberation portion. I'd be happy to come back and share, but this is kind of two birds and one stone. So the measurable objectives piece, the first one speaks to reading, and we're talking about federal annual measurable objectives here. And really, for us, we've talked about all gap groups and subgroups, but really looking at the difficulty with the English assessment and the rigor and as results start to come in, we really want to have a laser-like focus on specific groups first, and that's going to be Gap Group One. As you recall, comprised of students with disabilities, disadvantaged students, ELL students, and then Gap Group Two, African-American students. In math, we do feel confident to be able to address all subgroup populations with our efforts. Excuse me. And then the last two objectives speak to what Ms. Epps touched upon and really speak to the commitment to involve parents and engage parents, excuse me, in students' education and to continue to foster those partnerships. So very pleased with the work that's been taking place. A lot of hard work this year, and I want to commend my team. I also have Ms. Kristy Hill, our compliance supervisor, who's joined us and does a great job overseeing the grant. So at this time, anyone who would like to entertain questions from the group, we'd be happy to do so, and we appreciate your time.
Thank you, Dr. Caggianno, for a very comprehensive report. It was great to hear the perspective, though, from the coach and the actual teacher and how that's really playing out. Questions or comments from board members?
I have a comment since...
Is this this? Oh, I'm sorry.
I have a comment since you've said part of what I was going to say.
Okay.
I'll just echo your comments. Excellent presentation by you, Dr. Caggianno, and your staff.
Thank you, Ms. Richardson.
And I know you're fully aware that when you add Ms. Midlich and Ms. Stevenson to the presentation, it further validates the outstanding work that you're doing. When we hear from people in the trenches, you all develop the program, you explain the program, but the teachers in the trenches have to do the work. And Ms. Richardson, Ms. Stevenson is a perfect example of what you call the correct audience, right? So when you have a receptive teacher or the correct audience and an outstanding coach, you can do wonderful things. Great presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Pearson.
Mrs. Smith?
I had a question with Family Engagement, or Ms. Epps. I've been going to all the schools, you know, throughout the year, and I've got to tell you, the rooms that they have are wonderful. They have them all set up. It's just, it's like a little living room you can go in, and it's just a wonderful thing. And thank you so much for that. That's really great. And I was wondering with the home visits, a lot of them have talked about that. I was wondering, how do you determine, you know, what homes to visit?
We have actually implemented a Family Engagement RTI model. So it basically mirrors what our schools... So it basically mirrors what our schools are doing in terms of identifying the students, our lower-performing students. So that's who we're targeting first, really looking at working and building relationships with the families of our lower-performing students, those hard-to-reach parents, maybe those that have not responded to written communication, but looking at how can we engage them, either with a phone call, or even with email. Some parents prefer internet. So looking at different ways to engage families, but taking a more intentional approach to really, really look at the families of our lower-performing students. And then other home visits occur as needed. Sometimes the family engagement specialists will partner with the school counselor or school social worker, just to have an additional lens of support when they meet with the families. So just really depending upon the school situation, but as far as the program model, we're really looking at the families of our lower-performing students.
That's wonderful. I think that's great that you're able to go to them, because a lot of times, just can't get there, transportation or whatever it might be.
Right.
So that's, that's just wonderful. And another thing, how, family involvement, it's so hard, and engagement involvement, to measure that. Do you have ways to, you know, know how you're reaching out, and how you're doing, like, how many attendance or surveys, or?
Well, we're required to do an annual parent survey, so of course, that drives a lot of what we do. Parents provide a lot of feedback on that survey, but they also complement our schools as well, the teachers, principals, the conditions of the school. So it provides a lot of feedback for a lot of different areas. My parent advisory council meeting, that provides me with a tremendous amount, because we have representatives from all of our schools throughout, you know, different communities. So they're able to give their perspective as to what they see. Mainly, all of those parents that serve on that council are actively engaged in the school, so they're there on a regular basis, sometimes daily basis. So they really can provide me with some feedback on the new components and how they're working in the school. So I would say verbal feedback, definitely with the family engagement specialists working with the Title I interventionists and serving on that CLT, that provides them with feedback as well. We've instituted even evaluations, so that they're administered after every event. So we have the evaluations, the survey, verbal feedback, but really looking at all of that together to see how we can move forward and then continue to enhance the program.
That's wonderful.
Thank you.
No matter, no wonder you're doing such a great job.
Thank you.
Mrs. Phillips?
I wanted to say, wonderful presentation as well. And Ms. Smith asked my question, I was going to ask you about, was there a criteria for doing this, which you explained, but-
Okay.
I got to tell you, you need to talk to the people at Brian, because they've had a tremendous turnaround in getting their parents to come in there. I mean, I was just amazed at what they told me. But I want to say thank you, because I know it's difficult work, and y'all are doing it because you love the kids, and it shows with everything you're doing for them. Now, the other thing I want, is I want to ask Ms. Stevenson about that word study program. I need to get with you, because my daughter's finishing second grade, and I still haven't figured it out. So I'm sure I'm going to need some help before next year, so that perhaps I can help her. Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you so much. Dr. Shiflett?
Our last report for the evening is Dr. Hellman, our business and operations report.
Thank you, Dr. Shiflett, Ms. Mugler, Mr. Kilgore, ladies and gentlemen of the board. It's a pleasure to be with you this evening, presenting to you a statement of revenues and expenditures and encumbrances as of April 30, 2013. In revenues, we've received $156,156,156,265 for the period, which is $35,752,891 under our budgeted amount of $191,909,156. This compares favorably with our expenditures to date and including encumbrances of $150,883,833. So we've received approximately 81.4% of our revenues that were budgeted, and on our expenditures and encumbrances, we're at about 78.6%. So again, we're comparing favorably. Just to rehash, the current year's budget was built on 20,700 students. Our final March ADM was 20,398 students, or 302 students shy of what we had budgeted. And that equates to about a $2.4 million shortfall in revenues, but we are going to be able to make that up in attrition, and we're working, you know, monitoring that as we go. So we're coming down the home stretch, and everything is looking, looking fairly good. I'd be more than happy to answer or entertain any questions anybody may have.
Questions or comments from board members? Thank you very much, Dr. Hellman.
Thank you.
Dr. Shiflett?
That concludes our reports.
Thank you. We move on to the hearing of any delegations, a presentation of any written communications or petitions. Our first speaker to sign up tonight is Mr. David Dietrich. Speakers are reminded to limit their comments to a maximum of five minutes in accordance with school board policy BDDH. Good evening, Mr. Dietrich.
Good evening, Ms. Mugler, members of the board, Dr. Shiflett. My name is David Dietrich, 139 Wilderness Road. First of all, Ms. Mugler, I'd like to say that your legs aren't too bad-looking.
Okay.
Onto, moving on to what I'd like to talk about. First of all, I've brought before the board my thoughts on our school security, what I call school defenseless zones. When you have a school gun-free zone, that means the children are unprotected. You may have a resource officer, but in most cases, you do not. And so I'm concerned that the school board has not taken any action to protect our children from external threats. No state law has mandated this action, and the Hampton City Council hasn't taken any action either. Section 18.2, 308.1 of Virginia Code addresses firearms on school property. Under normal circumstances, firearms are prohibited, but the restriction does not apply to resource officers and those who support school activities. This means options can be considered that are very realistic and appropriate. For example, teachers can be armed, administrators can be armed, and other volunteers can offer their time in an armed fashion. I think it's important that we do not leave our children vulnerable to these type of threats, and I ask that you take this up before, in a public setting. Moving on to community engagement. I had asked you on several occasions, Ms. Mugler, about blue ribbon panel. You said that the board itself is a blue ribbon panel. So I'd like to ask you, when you will publish your first report of your action as such a panel? And when will you be issuing findings or recommendations? And what is your timeline for corrective action based on your blue ribbon activities? When will you hold public hearings and discussion? Moving on to another area that has recently come to my attention, that's something called Common Core, which is, seems to be getting traction in our school systems nationwide. First of all, I would like to say, Dr. Cazianno, with Title I, I'm impressed with the work you're doing. And I think it's instructive on how we can fight the Common Core movement, which has been called an operating system provided by the federal government. It's leading towards no community, parental involvement, one-size-fits-all, with no proven test model, using intrusive data mining with unknown costs, and it replaces literature, traditional literature, with technical manuals. Content of the material is basically communistic, as opposed to capitalistic, in our free system. There's little interest in understanding morality or purpose of government, and it's developing human capital as government workers, placing children and career paths at an early age. And the last part of that is using the Skinner-Pavlov method of training, where it eliminates thinking by creating predetermined responses. In other words, outcome-based education, with no involvement of the parents or creativity by the teachers, no study, no need to study politics or religious principles. Finally, there was a presentation tonight, which I thought was good, talking about the difference between the different schools. There's a good book out, came out last year by Andy Smarick, called Urban, The Urban School System of the Future: Applying Principles and Lessons of Chartering, New Frontiers in Education. Charter schools are the answers to better education, and Virginia Law 2010 was just signed by Governor McDonnell. There are four systematic advantages of charter schools. These are new starts, diverse options, replication and expansion of schools, and closure of schools, if needed. Essential elements for reform, growth, and adaptation. And there are five pillars of organization of these schools. Expansion and replication of great schools, persistently failing schools are closed, new schools are continually started, variety of schools and decentralized oversight, and families have choice between schools. This is about moving from a school system to a system of schools. Thank you very kindly.
Thank you, Mr. Dietrich. And you suggest that we have not taken any action with regard to gun-free zones or safety in the wake of the incidents in Connecticut. The fact is that our school division already had quite an extensive safety and emergency plan in place, and we were quite confident with the staff that we have in place to handle Our next speaker is Mr. Joe, is it Shai? Shai.
Ladies and gentlemen of the school board, I appreciate your giving me an opportunity to speak today. I'll try to be as positive as I can in my comments, and I just wanted to discuss the situation at one of the elementary schools, specifically, well, the general situation at Smith Elementary School, and the situation of one teacher, and specifically. For years, it was a wonderful school to work at, the environment was characterized by all as close-knit, caring, inclusive, and nurturing, if, for lack of, as a, as a general term. The administrators and the teachers worked together to foster a caring and comfortable inclusive environment, where all children learned, and I think they did pretty well. At least, that was the prevailing opinion. A lot of that changed this year with the addition of a new element. The defining characteristics at school this, at the school this year are not as positive. They're divisive to some extent, and it has to do with the present administration, I think. Teachers are not comfortable, they don't feel that their input is required, and certainly not solicited. Let me see. It's not a good environment. It used to be a great environment, it doesn't seem to be a good environment, at least that's the impression I get. The people I've talked to, parents, teachers, other administrators at the school, seem to feel that that's the case. The specific case of Ms. Hoja, I think I'd like to address that. She's been a teacher for 25 years. When she was six years old, her mother asked her what she wanted to do for a living. She told her she wanted to be a movie star or a first-grade teacher. Well, she did succeed in one of those. She was a first, she's a first-grade teacher, she's by all accounts, one of the best in the system.
I'm sorry, Mr. Shai, we can't speak specifically with regard to personnel in our public meeting.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Mrs. Shai, I will be glad to meet with you-
Oh, that'd be great.
-individually.
Yes, ma'am.
Be more than happy to do that. If you will leave with Ms. Anne Stevens, Chair, your contact information.
Certainly. I'd be happy to, and I'm sorry, I didn't know that. I did look at the, I looked briefly at your exclusionary clause on the thing, but I didn't see that. Okay, I appreciate that, thank you.
Yes, sir, thank you very much.
Can I, can I bring up things like this at the, at the city council meetings? Would there be anything that would prevent me from talking there?
About school division personnel?
Yes.
I don't think that would be an appropriate place.
Okay, well, it may, it may not be effective.
Why don't you come and talk to me?
Sure, I'll talk to you first, before I make, make any decisions. Thank you. It's just that time is running short. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Those were the only two forms that I had for speakers. Is there anyone else? Bowers, did you have any others? Thank you very much. We'll move on to other items for action. We start with item 6.01, science textbook adoption.
Madam Chair, I move approval of item 6.01.
Second. It's been moved and seconded, moved by Mrs. Phillips and seconded by Mrs. Smith, that we adopt the science textbook for grades two and seven. Is there any discussion? There being none, Ms. Bowers, would you call for the vote? Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Harper?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Mr. Pearson?
Aye.
Ms. Phillips?
Aye.
Ms. Mugler? Aye. Motion carries. We move to item 6.02, mathematics textbook adoption for kindergarten and grades one and two. Is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I move approval of item 6.02.
Second. It's been moved by Mrs. Phillips and seconded by Mrs. Smith, that we approve the adoption of mathematics textbooks for kindergarten, grades one and two. Is there any discussion? There being none, Ms. Bowers, would you call for the vote? Mr. Harper?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Mr. Pearson?
Aye.
Ms. Phillips?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Mugler? Aye. Motion carries. Item 6.03 is career and technical education, textbook adoption for television production, college and careers, materials and processes, MS keyboard and comp, production systems, teachers for tomorrow, too. Is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I move approval of item 6.03. Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Kilgore and seconded by Mr. Pearson, that we approve the career and technical education textbook for TV production, college and careers, materials and processes, MS keyboard and comp, production systems, teachers for tomorrow, too. Is there any discussion? There being none, Ms. Bowers, would you call for the vote? Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Mr. Pearson?
Aye.
Ms. Phillips?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Harper?
Aye.
Ms. Mugler? Aye. Motion carries. We move on to items 6.04 through 6.08, all have to do with policies. Is there a motion to approve those and block, or would anyone like to pull those off?
Madam Chair, I move approval of items 6.04 through 6.08.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Kilgore and seconded by Mrs. Phillips, that we approve items 6.04 through 6.08. There being the revision of school board policies IBA and GBAB, the neutrality of distributed materials, the revision of school board policy IF, curriculum development, the revision of policy IGDH, extracurricular activities and athletics for students, the deletion of school board policy IGD, which is extracurricular programs, and the revision of school board policies KD and BDDH, public comment at school board meetings. Is there any discussion? There being none, Ms. Bowers, would you call for the vote? Mr. Pearson?
Aye.
Ms. Phillips?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Harper?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Ms. Mugler? Aye. Motion carries. We move on to items for deliberation. We have items 7.01 through 7.21. We start with the Virginia Retirement System Resolution. Dr. Hellman?
Yes, ma'am, Madam Chair, just a real, real brief history of how we got to the point that we're at now. The 2010 General Assembly basically divided the VRS- The 2010 General Assembly basically divided the VRS employees between Plan One and Plan Two, and indicated that those employees who were Plan Two or those hired after July 1 of 2010 could, by the local adoption, be responsible for picking up their 5% employee share. Our board chose that that would be the action that they would take, so we then had the Plan Two employees paying the 5% employee share, Plan One employees not paying, or the employer contributing the 5% employer share. In 2012, the General Assembly then came forward and said, okay, for your Plan One employees, you will now begin to start with them paying their 5% employee contribution, and you can do so in 1% whole increments or in any combination thereof. But by 2016, the employee who was a Plan One employee must be picking up their entire 5% VRS employee contribution. Last year, with the 2012-2013 budget, the board enacted the 1% phase-in for the Plan One employees. So Plan One employees were paying 1%. This year, we were fortunate enough with the local contribution being what it was to go ahead and put the remainder of the 5% or the 4% that was remaining into the budget for employees to pick up and pay on their behalf for their 5% contribution. So that will be a total 5% contribution by both Plan One and Plan Two employees to VRS. The contribution was offset, one of the stipulations in the Assembly action was that it be offset by a 1% increase in salary. So of the 6% salary increase that is budgeted for next year, 4% of it will go to offset the VRS contribution. This is a pro forma resolution that has come to us from the state, and it basically indicates that our Plan One and Plan Two employees will be contributing their 5% VRS employee share. And it is for both groups, the professional group and the non-professional group. That's just a very quick overview. I'll try to answer any questions. Ms. Scott's here as well, if there's any, any question that anybody may have.
Okay. Questions from board members? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Title I, Part A, Improving Basic Programs. Dr. Poggiano, you want to take up all three of these items, or?
No, actually, we have, Joan Davis is here for Title Two, and Debbie Summer for Title Three. The presentation earlier tonight really highlighted the major changes within this grant. The other thing I would say is that this year, schools had a lot more financial resources to do a number of things. Our Total One Schools, whether that was tutoring and/or conferences, and I think the coach's role this year is going to be more important than ever because we're going to be relying, having to rely on a lot of in-house expertise, because there just aren't a lot of additional dollars for schools. So the additional dollars for, that training that often, that folks went to, now we'll be often relying on in-house expertise. But Kristy Hill is here, our compliance supervisor. She and I would be happy to answer any questions, specifics you have regarding this grant.
Questions from board members?
All right, thank you.
Thank you so much. Title II, Part A, Teacher Quality, 2013-2014 Individual Program Application. Ms. Davis?
First of all, let me apologize. You've got, I've had some computer glitches recently that did some saving funny things. So the final is perfect, I promise you. Title II is teacher quality. And so it picks up all of the division initiatives that are very important to all of us, like PLC, National Board Certification. We do have a classroom management coach at Bryan to support over there. We help any provisionally licensed teacher. At one point, we asked all of our special ed teachers to get the general curriculum endorsement. That being said, we felt that we should help pay for that course since it was our decision to do that. So that's in Title II. Technology has always been a large part. This grant is allowed for the four core subjects, for technology, for some foreign language things. It's training, it calls it teacher quality, but the monies can be spent on the superintendent, on teachers, on principals, administrators, and on parent, and on instructional assistants. So our instructional assistants have been in this program. I know that you know that there were 30 chosen, I think about four or five years ago. We have, there were 13, 14 that have graduated, 13 of them are now teaching in our school. This year, we have 11 more that will be graduating, and hopefully will also secure jobs with Hampton City Schools. They've been with us for a lot of years and love Hampton, and that's very important. We have model classroom coaches who work with new teachers. We have PBIS. I know that you've listened to Sue Lively talk about positive behavior intervention and supports. Title II supports all of those division initiatives. Professional learning communities, just new teacher, the new teacher and new administrator evaluation systems that have come into play. Title II has also helped out with some of that through the Summer Leadership Academy. So we kind of use the funds in any way that we can to make it so that we have, everyone is learning that's allowed in this grant.
Questions from board members? Thank you so much. Item 7.04, Title III, Part A, Language Instruction for Limited English Proficient and Immigrant Students, 2013-2014 Individual Program Application. Good evening, Ms. Smith.
Good evening. I'm very pleased to be here this evening to share with you some of our new initiatives for this coming year in our grant for 2013-14. As you know, we will continue to try to meet our annual measurable objectives for reading, mathematics, proficiency, and progress. To do that, we have added an extra tutor at the secondary level to deal with our low-level students in high school and middle school, who really need that extra support that they don't necessarily get all the time in the classroom. We will continue with our teacher-coach, and that is the teacher who goes around to all of the schools that have opted-out students, and helps the teachers tell what the students can do, what their scores mean, what the strategies are, I'm sorry, what the strategies are that will best serve the needs of those students. We also have a wonderful initiative that we're going to be going through this year, but we're able to do next year, is to collaborate with the YMCA on a four-week enrichment program this summer to help our students who are very low-level language learners, stop them from losing their language over the summer. They will have opportunities they would never have had in any other way. They will learn how to swim, learn some history about Hampton, how the water impacts the area, and they're going to be able to go to Busch Gardens. And many of these kids would never have been able to do that because their parents work very long hours, and they don't have the time to take their children anywhere. So we're hoping that will have an impact on their language skills and also on their speaking skills in a very non-academic scenario. We also will provide professional development for ESL staff with the WIDA. We will be dealing with onsite training for assessment reports, and also on differentiated instruction for ELLs. We will also continue to send our teachers to the VESA Conference, which is the State ESL Conference. We will also continue to transit all of our documents that are mandated by the federal government for all of our parents who speak Spanish, Vietnamese, Chinese, and Arabic. We did receive about, six weeks ago, a reallocation of $273.49. So you will notice that this grant is up to $43,050.80 as, and over what it was last year. And we will have our, our allocation will be forthcoming shortly.
Questions from board members? Mrs. Smith?
One thing, a quick thing, I just noticed on all three of these applications was it's got June 5th as the date to be signed. Is this something that needs to be action tonight, or are you going to be changing that? Are we going to vote on it next meeting?
We can change the date.
Oh, is that all it is? Okay. Okay. I just saw that and wondered. Okay. Thank you. That was it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Further on our deliberation, we move into policy, starting with item 7.05, Revision of School Board Policy IA, Instructional Goals and Objectives. Are there any comments or questions from board members on this particular policy? Not, we'll move on to item 7.06, which is the Revision of School Board Policy DLC, which has to do with the expense reimbursements and DLC-R, expense reimbursement regulations. Any questions or comments from board members on this particular? Mrs. Smith?
On the DLC-R, the expense reimbursements, let me find the page here. Let's see. I noticed on page four in the definitions for travel status, there was a note added in there of, for trips lasting two or more days that fall within a radius of such-and-such, payment of lodging will be considered on a case-by-case. It seems like that wouldn't go under definition as much as go later on, I think it's, let's see, like page 10 or 11, where you're actually talking about lodging and all the rules and stuff about lodging. It just seemed like a more appropriate place to put it, if that makes sense?
We can certainly look at it. What we were trying, it used to be that we very definitively said you were not in travel status if you were 75 miles or less from your base point. But we have found that with some of the meetings that occur in Richmond, and the 75-mile mark was generally considered to be Richmond. But we've found that some of the meetings, because they occur in different parts of Richmond and, you know, the surrounding area, that it's more efficient depending on the meeting. For instance, if it's a one-day meeting, absolutely, you can go up and come back in the same day for the most part. But if it's a three-day meeting, sometimes it's more cost-effective to put the employee up in a, you know, I don't want to say cheap, inexpensive hotel. Yeah, in an inexpensive hotel than to pay the travel to drive back and forth every day for three days. So in that 75 to 100-mile radius, we wanted to define that there was some flexibility in where that travel status cutoff was.
So if it's under 75, it's not supposed, you're not going to have lodging period no matter?
Correct. If it's under 75 miles, you're considered to be able to, to drive.
Okay. Then 75 to 100, gray area.
Depends, yeah. It depends, and we take it on a case-by-case basis, which is why we wanted to leave a little bit of flexibility.
And, and I think that makes sense. It's, I don't know that it's clear in here that under 75 isn't. It just basically talks about the 75 to 100, but doesn't really talk about less than 75, unless that's somewhere else in here, I couldn't.
I think official station says the area within, and it used to say, it's the previous page, I'm sorry.
Oh, okay.
Official station says the area within 100-mile radius of an employee's designated base point.
Okay.
It used to say 75, but now we've created that wiggle room between the 75 and 100.
I got you. Okay. It's just separated out. I was, I guess, looking forward to one place.
And, and the reason we changed the official status from 75 to 100 was to give us that leeway. We didn't want to say it was 75 and then, you know, say 100 somewhere else. So we said 100, but, between 75 and 100, we're going to kind of look at it on a case-by-case basis.
Thank you. You're welcome.
That makes sense. Any other questions?
So, so are you comfortable with it remaining?
Yeah, it's all in there. It's somewhat confusing to me, but to see it in the two different places, but it, I mean, it's there and it makes sense, so that's what matters.
Are you okay with leaving it like it is, or do you want us to look at somehow changing it?
It'd be nice if somehow it was together, just so it was very clear, straightforward, that, you know, under 75 is not, 75 to 100 is a gray area, over 100, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
You just have to sort of piece it together when you read through this, but that's just me too, so I don't know what other board members might think. Might not be a big deal to me, it's.
I mean, we still, we still need to have the definition for official station and travel status, but perhaps we can, you know, tweak the language to make it a little clearer, the distinction between the two.
Yeah. Just take a look, and if not, I'm fine with how it is.
Okay. Yeah, we'll look at it and see what we can do with it.
Okay. Thank you. Item 7.07 is New School Board Policy INB, Teaching About Controversial Issues. Are there any questions or comments from board members on this policy? Mr. Kilgore?
I have one comment. I know the following deliberation item is a new policy as well, which is selection of instructional material. I think it would be appropriate to make policy IIA, selection of instructional material, a cross-reference to this policy.
So make IIA a cross-reference to INB?
Correct.
Ms. Reeves, is that doable?
No problem.
Great. Love it when you say that.
Yeah.
We move on to item 7.08, New School Board Policy IIA, which is the selection of instructional materials. Anything further on this policy? We move on to, I'm sorry, Mrs. Smith, go ahead.
I just had one thing also, a cross-reference. I wasn't sure if maybe the neutrality of distributed materials might be, come under that as well, where you've got a cross-reference for the controversial issues. Adding a cross-reference to IBA, GBAD, neutrality of distributed materials might fit in there.
That's all. 7.09 is the Revision of School Board Policy KBA, Requests and Responses to Inquiries Under the Virginia Freedom of Information Act. Any comments or questions from board members on that? It just happens to be minor language changes to bring it in line with Virginia School Board Association policy. We move on to item 7.10, Review of School Board Policies KBA-FA, which has to do with requests for public records, and KBA-F2 Record of Inspection. Any comments or questions from board members on this item? We move to item 7.11, Revision of School Board Policy GCBAD, Sick Leave. Any comments or questions regarding the sick leave policy? Revision of School Board Policy IHBG, Home Instruction. Any questions or comments on, on this particular policy from members? You gave us so much information last time. Item 7.13, thank you, Dr. Smith, New School Board Policy KL, Public Complaints. Any questions, Mrs. Smith?
I just thought it might be helpful to add to the cross-references on this. There's reference to closed meetings and also public comment at school board meetings, so I thought those might be two good cross-references to add to that.
Ms. Reeves, can you do that?
I'm not, sure, I'm just not sure I'm completely understanding. The only reason that the closed-meeting sentence was added to here was to talk about the fact that there might be something that was confidential enough that it couldn't be available in an open meeting. Is that?
Right. Yeah, just with public complaints, just talking about, you know, things that could only be in closed session that shouldn't be brought up, you know, in open session. It talks about that in our public comment policy now. And we also have the policy about closed meetings and what those are, you know, what types of things go in that. Because it just says the matter may be considered a closed due to the nature, and that, that policy just explains what the nature would be. That's all.
Okay. And remember, if I add it, add both of those, both of those are going to come back and be the back, I'm going to have to pull both of those and add them, this back to those. Is that what you want? You want that, you want this now added to public comment, you want this one now added to your closed-meeting one?
Sure.
Okay.
I mean, whoever you.
Okay. We shall do.
Item 7.14, Revision of School Board Policy AE, School Division Goals and Objectives. Any comments or questions from board members on this policy? Moving to 7.15, Revision of School Board Policy JIA, Student Recognitions. Moving to 7.15, Revision of School Board Policy JIA, Student Recognitions. Any questions, comments? We move on to item 7.16, which is the Revision of School Board Policy IGAE/IGAF, which is Health, Physical Education. Any comments or questions from board members on this one? It's just making the change to add a goal of 150 minutes per week average. Item 7.17, Revision of School Board Policy IGAG, Teaching About Drugs, Alcohol, and Tobacco. Any questions, comments? Revision of School Board Policy IGAH, Family Life Education. Comments or questions? Item 7.19, Revision of School Board Policy IGAJ, Driver Education. Adding new language to reflect fuel-efficient driving. Any questions on this policy? Item 7.20, Revision of School Board Policy IKC, Class Rank and Course Weight. Any questions, comments from board members on this revision? And item 7.21 is the Revision of School Board Policy IKA, which is the grading system, and it just is deleting prior criteria and adjusting formatting. Any questions, comments? Mrs. Smith?
I did have one question on page five. A sentence was added in there of a pass/fail options available in a limited number of high school elective courses. And I apologize, because I probably should have asked you about this before, but I was curious why it's a limited number. If there's an elective course that isn't required for graduation, why a student couldn't take that pass/fail? I just know with the fact of some students that have over 4.0, several of those high-achieving students choose not to take an elective because it'll actually bring their GPA down. And a lot of those electives are things that I think would be very valuable for those students to have, but they choose not to do it because they don't want to bring down their GPA. So I just think it'd be neat to have a pass/fail as an option for any non-core-type thing, and that might be a little bit too heavy of a change right now to discuss, but I wanted to bring that up. Alan?
In my experience... I muted my microphone. Sorry. In my experience, the courses that those high-achieving students you mentioned that they want to take as a pass/fail, so it doesn't have that negative impact on their GPA, are indeed offered as pass/fail courses. For example, gym, health, and PE, and even some of the career and technical education courses are currently offered with pass/fail options. So students can take those courses that are required and that they would want to take without having that detriment.
I don't think it's all of them, like guitar, and there's a few that you can't. But I was just curious why, why it's selected, why some are and some aren't.
Dr. Johnson?
Ms. Smith, I can't give you a definitive answer without looking at a list of what courses have that option, but it's certainly something we will explore. Some of those electives are required as part of our instructional program. Some electives by state mandate have to be sequential for students to get credit for graduation. So we would need to look very carefully so that we don't create disincentives for students to take courses as well as what they are required to take as part of our program under the standards of quality.
Okay.
It's something we can look at.
Okay.
And you do need, students need to understand that if they do fail the course, it does have consequences. So while they can take them as pass/fail, there are consequences for failing a pass/fail course.
Okay.
And we will look at that. But we didn't have it in the original grading guidelines, and we wanted to make sure that that was clear. So that's the only reason why it's in here right now.
Yeah, it is a good thing to add. That is very good. Thank you, Dr. Johnson. That would be great.
I just want to be clear. You're just looking into that in the future. We're not looking into that for purposes of this particular policy at this time.
It doesn't have any bearing on the policy itself. There are courses where your student has passed/fail. Ms. Smith is questioning why not all electives? Does it have something to do with that?
Okay. Thank you. Moving on to deliberation first read. Revision of School Board Policy IG, Adult Education. Good evening, Dr. Cooper, again.
Good evening. This policy, as it was written previously, really had no text. It was just a reference to the legal code that says the board will provide adult education. So we just gave that a little bit of information for anyone reading the policy on what we do offer and what the goals of the program are. And by incorporating a statement that we may also offer vocational coursework, we eliminated the need for the following policy, a separate policy on vocational coursework per adults.
Any questions or clarification? Dr. Cooper on this one? Thank you.
You're welcome.
We move to item 8.02, which is the deletion of School Board Policy IGEC, Adult Occupational
Is that Dr. Cooper?
Dr. Cooper?
Do you want to speak to the deletion of this policy?
I think, I think she had said that it has been incorporated.
Okay. I'm sorry. I'm very methodical. I like to go through each item.
And I believe you are required as chair to be detail-oriented. We would like to delete this policy because we have added the vocational component to the general policy on adult education.
Thank you. Any questions from board members on that? Thank you.
You're welcome.
Revision of School Board Policy JEDB, Student Dismissal Precautions. Dr. Johnson?
This policy language was updated, and we did add that last sentence for clarity because in the interest of student safety, if we are not able to verify a request to release a student to someone for whom the parent has not noted on the emergency card, it is our practice that the student is not released. So we don't know, when we get a written note, who has actually provided that note. And so schools follow up to be able to reach the parent, to get that information from them. And if we take a phone call, they make every effort to verify that it is a bona fide call. And if we can't, then we exercise our caution and not release the student without knowing that we've actually gotten that information from a parent.
Questions for Dr. Johnson on this policy? Okay. Thank you very much. We'll move on to item 8.04, Revision of School Board Policy LB, Education Agency Relations, formerly relations with other schools and school districts.
As you can see from the red line, all we had was a series of code, and now using language from VSBA, it clearly identifies how we will work with other educational agencies.
Questions for Dr. Johnson on this policy? Okay, we move on to item 8.05, New School Board Policies LC, Charter Schools, and LC-E, Charter School Application Addendum. Mrs. Reeves, you're up.
This is a policy, the two of them go together, LC and the actual LC-E, which is your, the actual addendum and the application addendum. These policies have been recommended by VSBA, and a policy is required under the Virginia Code so that people can, will know how Hampton City Schools expects the application for a charter school to occur within its division. VSBA puts out a particular language. This is adopted language from VSBA, but it's also incorporated some of the language that's been tried and true from a larger Northern Virginia division as well. And so we didn't completely recreate the wheel. We went ahead and used, for example, some of the application information, so, from that policy. So the two are combined.
Okay.
This is a new policy. We do not have one.
Questions for clarification on this policy? We'll take that up for deliberation on the 17th.
And between now and when it comes to deliberation, I will be conferring with the superintendent. There is a new provision that the General Assembly added this year, and it applies only to, in the event that you, the school board, are going to apply for a charter school, you don't have to follow the same, the same requirement of going back to the state to have your application reviewed. VSBA has as of, well, and actually, VDOE also has some suggested language that just came out in the past week. And we may add that paragraph in here before you get it on deliberation. Does that make sense? Just in, in the event that this is not a third party asking to, to apply for a charter school, but in fact, this board of seven decides to, to create a charter school, there's a slightly different provision that was tweaked and put into place by the General Assembly this year. And that, when this was drafted, that had not been passed.
Okay.
Okay? So I will be adding that between now and your deliberation. So if you see something in green, that's why it's there.
Well, you just answered my question. I was going to say, are you going to put that in green so we know that's the added part?
Is that okay?
That's great.
Okay.
Any other questions, Ms. Reeves, on that? Rounding out our deliberation first read, Revision of School Board Policy JECB, which is the admission of non-resident students. Mrs. Reeves?
No.
Dr. Johnson?
Actually, I'm...
Kinship care.
Yeah. I'm fine to, to address this. I only added one clause here because the General Assembly has added a new provision to Virginia Code Section 22.1-3 with regard to kinship care. And under certain provisions, kinship care is a valid reason for a student to be enrolled in Hampton City Schools. So when I was working on drafting affidavits for those new provisions for use of, by Student Services, I started thinking about what policies might need to be tweaked, and this is the first one. Okay?
Okay.
So everything is correct in here, except there is that exception of those who qualify pursuant to that new section, which is for, little colon, three, which talks about kinship care. And there is a whole series of affidavits and powers of attorney that the parent and the kinship care adult relative provider must go through to be able to be admitted as, as a student in Hampton City Schools, which previously was not allowed, but as of July 1 will be.
Any, any questions for clarification on this? All right. Thank you very much, Ms. Reeves. We move on to informational items. Dr. Schiflett?
I do have just a couple of things. We have a really busy week next week. On Monday, June 10, from 4 to 6, we have our retirement reception back at our School Administrative Center, down in the first-floor conference room. On Wednesday, June 12, I'll be going to the Retired Teachers Scholarship Luncheon. It's always a great time. They give scholarships to our students, but also to adults who may be wishing to further their education. And then, of course, our graduations next week. On Thursday, June 13, Bethel, at 7:00 p.m. On Friday, June 14, Hampton High School at 7:00. And then on Saturday, June 15, we have Phoebus at 9:00 a.m. and Kickitana at 1:30. So these will be great times for Hampton City Schools and our families and community.
Thank you, Dr. Schiflett. Any other informational items?
Yes. I want to thank Ms. Barrett Wright, Principal at Lindsay Middle School, for personally inviting all of the school board members to their academic awards program this week. And not only were we personally invited, we were sort of surprised because she had a role for each of us to play onstage, helping to give out the awards and the recognition. Then we all treated students and parents and board members, too, a wonderful breakfast. So I want to personally thank her for doing that.
It was so well organized, very well put together. She made us feel very, very special.
She did.
And it was the kids' day, but she made us feel very special.
Chairman Muggler?
Yes, sir. Mr. Booth.
And I would like to take this one last chance to thank all of you for an excellent year. So thank you again. It's been fantastic.
Thank you.
And we have very much enjoyed your company. I have to say, you're sort of what I could call irreplaceable, that dynamic delivery you have. So we're going to miss you, and we've enjoyed having you with us, and we hope you'll come back and visit us. I have a feeling we're going to be seeing a lot of you next year.
We'll look for you on the podium next year.
Of course. I just can't let people take over.
That's true.
You'll see me in that seat, micromanaging, whoever fills my place.
Mr. Booth, if you're bored next year, you can come and be on, Dr. Johnson's and my policy review committee, and you can be still a part of all of these policies.
I would love that opportunity. Thank you so much, Ms. Reeves.
That was a good answer.
He's a politician.
Any other informational items from board members? Okay, our next meeting will be held on June 19 at 6:30 at the Rupert Sargent Building, 1 Franklin Street. And the annual reorganizational meeting will be held at 6:30 p.m. on July 17, right here at Jones Magnet Middle School. And there will only be one meeting in the month of July. Hopefully, our staff is happy about that. Is there anything further to come before this body? If not, this meeting is adjourned.